All right, it is six oh four P M on Thursday the fourth and I'm and I'm bringing this regular meeting of the Dunsmere City Council or a joint special meeting of the Dunsmere City Council, Dunsmere Planning Commission and Finance Committee into order. With that, we'll do, everyone can please stand for the black slip. All right, this next item might take a while, we have roll call.
Councilmember Lucasi.
Present.
Councilmember Brian.
Present.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Present.
Vice Mayor Sebring appears to be absent.
Today.
And Mayor Clarno.
Present.
And shall I go with the Planning Commission roll call or that's later? Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Staff comments, Blake?
Let's see, mainly just wanted to know, there's been a lot of good public works, they've been busy. So a main project up at the airport, clearing a lot of the brush and things, so that's been really helpful. The other piece that I'll mention at the end of the meeting, not to get you guys bogged down with your brains for the moment, but there are some other training opportunities that we have, so I'll just mention those at the end. And due to time, we'll just move on.
Sounds good, all right, councilman, starting with Councilor Brian.
I just want to thank everyone for being here, we've been discussing, doing this joint meeting, both for training and for collaboration purposes for several years, it's been a goal of council and just hasn't been put together, so it's really great to be in a room with all of you guys. Officially, especially with Brown Act Committees, it's difficult to interact. So really good to get us all in the same room because we're the people most devoted to serving Dunsmere, so thank you for attending tonight, I know it's extra, but I hope we'll be able to do this on a annual or semi-annual basis, thanks.
Councilmember Lucasi, nothing tonight, or?
I just ate, so no.
Okay, Councilmember Hubbard?
No, just looking forward to the joint meeting.
All right, I would also like to thank the Planning Commission and Finance Committee members from attending, along with any members of the, or members of the public who came out tonight. I do just have one other quick thing, Candles in the Canyon is the thirteenth and there will be a street closure on Pine Street for that, so just be aware when you're driving through town, Pine Street will be closed during that time. And with that, since we do have a little bit of an agenda tonight, we'll move on to public comment. This is a time for any member of the public to make general comment to the city council. There will also be a second public comment period when the Planning Commission, when we join the two meetings together, so you can choose which, which of the two you'd like to make a public comment at, or both. All right, with that, I will open up public comment, three minutes, I'll give a thirty second warning when your time is almost up. We'll do individuals in the room first, followed by individuals on Zoom, and with that, I will open up public comment. And if you are online, please go to the React tab and raise your hand to indicate you'd like to make a public comment. I think.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, commissioners, staff, community members. My name is Alan Magagna, I'm the owner and operator of Al's Depot and Emporium at four one one six Pine Street. First, I want to thank everyone here, including the city attorney, planning staff, for the work putting, the work put into clarifying processes and responsibilities. The level of collaboration we're seeing tonight between the city council and the Planning Commission is exactly what small business owners like myself rely on to keep investing in Dunsmere. I'm here to follow up on the topic that we've discussed in over a year of the onsite cannabis consumption. I know you guys have diligently been working on it in the last couple of months, so I appreciate that. We have, we have heard consistent acknowledgement from city leadership, planning staff, and legal counsel that the state of California has already provided clarity, the Department of Cannabis Control has confirmed in writing that local jurisdiction is the prevailing authority on whether a licensed cannabis business may operate in onsite cannabis consumption area. The state also has confirmed that there are no additional state approvals required beyond local authorization. So as long as a retail premises meets local requirements and ventilation rules are maintained, I think you are good to go. I want to be very clear, I am ready to move forward. My business has demonstrated compliance, responsibility, and a deep commitment to the safety and comfort of our community. We have proactively planned ventilation, security, and separately and clearly separated consumption spaces, all which align fully with state law and local zoning. What I'm asking for now is not a new debate, but a progress toward a decision. We have a path, we have state correspondence confirming the authority in this room, is in this room, and we have a very real opportunity to support local economic activity, allowing visitors and residents to consume legally purchased cannabis in a safe, regulated environment. This is a tourism town, this is a business district, this is exactly the right place to provide safe cannabis hospitality. I am requesting the city, the city council alongside site council schedule the next formal step, whether that is a Planning Commission recommendation, a zoning amendment, or a conditional use permit hearing, so that we can finally move forward on this discussion into action. I clear, I care deeply about Dunsmere, I show up, I invest here, and I keep my doors open every day as much as I possibly can, with some breaks in between. I just need the city to meet me halfway with a clear, timely, and fair process that follows as the law is written, not imagined. Thank you for your time, your service, and your continued support in this conversation.
All right, thank you, and any further public comment this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Committee reports, we do have Finance Committee over the time, Matthew, if you'd like to do a brief report on that?
Yes, Finance Committee met this past Monday and will be meeting again, not this Monday, but the following Monday, the fifteenth, so if anyone would like to attend, please, they're more than welcome to. I don't think there's anything that should take up this body as a whole right now, so, thanks.
Just to see if we point out that yes, Hannah and Alan are both members of that, along with Michael and.
Our treasurer, Hannah Smith, if you didn't know her, she's amazing, and our very dedicated citizen committee member, Alan Clover. We do have, for members of the public, a vacancy on the Finance Committee. It does require a certain degree of qualification when it comes to being able to work on accounting or financial matters, but apply at the website or inquire at City Hall if you're interested in serving.
All right, any other committees that met in the last couple of weeks? Nope, okay. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the November twentieth meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of three items, adoption of ordinance five eight two, an ordinance of the city of, city council, city council, city of Dunsmere, amending section one seven dot six eight dot one one zero of Title seventeen of the Dunsmere Municipal Code relating to the permitting process for painting in the historic district and its buffer zone, Z O A twenty five dash zero one, the check register for eleven six through eleven thirty, and agreed to the two thousand twenty six council meeting dates. And on a just quick side note, I would like to thank the Planning Commission for their work on that ordinance as well, so, all right.
Sure, I move we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Consent agenda approved, and with that, I will call and to order a joint, the joint meeting of the city council and Planning Commission, and we will swear in the newly appointed members.
Let Craig call it to order.
Oh.
You're good.
I do go to a meeting where there's two boards that meet at once and they all have to do everything twice, so, do you want to run it that way?
Okay, so you guys all mic'd up, turn your mics on, please. And have you raised your right hand? And repeat after me when I say aye, and then say your name, do solemnly swear or affirm, go ahead. Aye, grace.
Solemnly swear.
I grace.
Oh, I grace Sanchez solemnly swear.
You can both say it at the same time.
Okay.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And that I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you, Bonnie Bailey and Grace Sanchez.
All right. Roll call.
I can do it, I'm ready. Commissioner Sanchez, Commissioner Michael Sanchez.
Oh, is this my re?
This is just a roll call.
Oh, real, oh, present. Present.
Commissioner Grace Sanchez.
Present.
And he's next door, oh, Commissioner Dwight Bailey.
Present.
Commissioner Bonnie Bailey. Commissioner Carol Scalco. Commissioner Timor. Chair K.
Present.
All right, full house, thank you.
All right, with that, we'll open up the joint meeting to public comment, same rules as before. Oh yeah, let's just recognize that we have the Finance Committee here as well, if you want to just do a quick roll call for them as well.
Treasurer Hannah Smith.
Present.
And citizen committee member Alan Clover.
With that, we'll open this up to public comment. If anyone would like to address both or all three bodies, you are welcome to do so at this time. Same rules as before, three minutes, I'll give a thirty second warning when your time is almost up, we'll do individuals in the room first, followed by Zoom. With that, I will open this up to public comment, and if you would like to make a public comment on Zoom, please go to the React tab and raise your hand. Seeing no one, I will close public comment. All right, and with that, we'll move into the joint city council and Planning Commission workshop with the training section.
Are we doing the Brown Act training first? Are we following the thing, or are we moving that around?
Does.
You want to do, you want to introduce? Okay, they got it, David Lim, everybody, city attorney, Jessica Hankin, city planner. And then Gary, and also Gary with Jessica's office. Now we'll go into the Brown Act training.
If you don't mind, I'll just say a couple words so everybody knows where we're going tonight. David's going to be doing the first presentation, obviously, on Brown Act. And then we're going to be focusing the second presentation on the role of the Planning Commission and commissioners, and Gary will be giving that presentation. We'll have questions after each one of these, and you can feel free to jump in at any time while we're giving the presentations also, so we can kind of keep this a little informal. And then I'll do the final presentation on Planning Commission meeting procedures, which obviously has a lot of overlap with city council meeting procedures, so hopefully everybody can get something out of that. And then finally, Blake will be facilitating a discussion between the city council, Planning Commission, or I guess in among all three of you, the Finance Committee as well. So we have a short list of topics on that, and welcome any other planning related topics, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, honorable chair, members of the Planning Commission, good evening. Pleasure to be here, my name is David Lim, I am your city attorney. It's great to be here, I'm going to be giving you a twenty minute pared down version of the Brown Act training. Normally, this is a two hour, hour to two hour presentation if you go to League of Cities or any other sort of ethics training, so this isn't the full panoply of Brown Act issues that may come up, so you may see some holes in it, and that's okay. Today, we're just sort of giving you a primer, an introduction, a refresher for those of you who've had the full training. It's about twenty six slides. I like to usually move around the room and kind of engage my audience, but we're recording this, and so people may want to watch it later, so I'm going to stay planted right here. Couple ground rules. I am very informal, so as Jessica said, if you have questions, feel free to raise your hand, and we'll stop, we'll take questions. If we're starting to kind of go off in like hypotheticals and get into the weeds, I may politely be like, hey, let's talk about this offline later so that we can kind of stay on track, but I will be around the rest of tonight, so after the meeting, if somebody wants to go, you know, grab coffee or something, you know, we can go and chat, and I'm happy to stay as long as possible. I also am available anytime by email or cellphone if anyone has any questions, that's why I'm your city attorney. Other ground rule, the pizza is not a bribe for, for my client, but it is a well-known practice for presenters. I do a lot of presenting for the state, around the state, for the league, and I know that well-fed audiences are happy audiences. And I used to be a council member myself, and the worst thing was having to come to a workshop after you've worked a full day at your day jobs and be like, who's this guy talking and talking and talking? So if you need to eat, I will not be offended if you get up, go grab a piece of pizza, come back and sit, I don't get distracted easily, so please help yourself. Members of the audience, please, because I'm staying tonight at the Angler Lodge, I can't take the pizza back to the hotel room, it'll stink up the whole room, so you eat it now, take it home, but please get rid of it, all right, Brown Act training. I think my mouse does not have enough. Does not have enough juice to get to my laptop. So, oh, this is actually better because I can now see the audience and all of you. The Brown Act is a policy of open government, so baseline, everybody needs to remember that the right of the public to participate in public meetings is enshrined in our California Constitution. So it's not a matter of, oh, do we have to let these people hear us, should we let these people hear us? It is a constitutional right of every citizen to know what their government is doing, and we all agree to that, right? I mean, everybody knows that's a no brayer. The Brown Act was made as a response to that constitutional mandate. And so in the nineteen fifties, there was a guy who you'll never guess his name, guess what his name was? Ralph M. Brown, he created the Ralph M. Brown Act, talk about, you know, narcissism, he named the act after himself, and it's the model of transparent, good governance. And basically, it is enshrined in the government code under five four nine five three and a bunch of other sections after that, it's a huge section, and it covers everything from who can talk to each other, when you can talk to each other, to who has a right to speak at a meeting, spoiler alert, everybody. How long they get to speak, how you notice a meeting, when you notice a meeting, what we're going to focus on in my twenty minutes today is really communication between all of you, and then a little bit about the right of the public to speak. We're going to focus in on those two very narrow areas, okay? But the Brown Act says that all meetings of the legislative body of a local agency shall be open and public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting of the legislative body of a local agency except as otherwise provided in this chapter. This is important because it means that you, as our planning commissioners and city council, any action that you take has to be done at one of these open and public meetings. And as a local government official, you cannot have any of those conversations or meetings outside of that public meeting, and we're going to talk about what that means, okay? What is a legislative body? Well, to make it simple, both of you, okay? That's simple, city council, they know their legislative body, planning commissions are deemed to be legislative body, finance commission, a local body, or finance committee, local body, okay? These are the, the requirements, but I'll just tell you, you're all a local body, or a legislative body, okay? What is a meeting? Okay, so this is kind of important, a meeting is a congregation of a majority of the legislative body at the same time and place to hear, discuss, or deliberate, or take action on any item within the subject matter. Now, the two bullet points I want to focus you all in on is a congregation of a majority of the body. So a majority of the Planning Commission is how many? Four. Majority of the city council is three, okay? So if there's four of you and you all get together, you met, met the first requirement of a meeting. It doesn't matter if you're sitting here at Pizza Company, down off in the Sacramento River for a picnic, if four of you get together, you've bing, you've rang the bell for the first requirement of having a meeting. Now, you still need to meet the other three, okay, but any time four of you get together, you should immediately be like, oh my gosh, are we having a meeting? I'm not serious, I mean, it's, it's a thing, I know the council's well-trained, if there's three of them, they, they're like, are we having a meeting, okay, then you need to start thinking, what are we doing? Are we doing anything that makes it more of a meeting? And so the other one I want you to focus on is to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action, and I'm going to focus on the word discuss, okay? If a majority of either body gets together, anywhere, anywhere, and they start to talk and they say, hey, you know that meeting that's coming up? What do you think about the paint colors? You're discussing, and there's a majority of you, and you're now having a meeting. And it's a violation of the Brown Act because does the public know you're there? No, if you all just sort of met up randomly at a movie theater to go watch a movie, and you start talking, you're having a meeting, and it could be a Brown Act violation. But remember, you have to meet all the elements, and so we're going to go through some of the exemptions or how, how you can do, how, you know, four of you can meet and not have a meeting, okay, so we're going to get there, but I want to kind of hammer that point home, okay? If you're together, you should always be thinking, we shouldn't talk about city business. Talk about anything else but city business, okay? All right. Serial meetings, not serial as in your breakfast meal, but serial as in a sequence are illegal. And what are they? So those are a series of communications, direct or indirect, employed by a majority to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business or potential business. That's all legally well and good, but it doesn't make any sense until you see the examples, so let me get straight to the examples. There are two main kind of serial meetings that our two legislative bodies here want to avoid. The first is what's called hub and spoke, okay? Then the second one is called the chain. So hub and spoke is, do I have that, I don't know, okay, so here's hub and spoke, okay? And we're going to use Blake, our city manager, as an example, because usually it is the city manager who becomes the unwitting participant in the hub and spoke. Hub and spoke, you basically have one person in the middle, and then they spoke out to other people. And everybody comes and speaks to the middle, okay? So for example, if Chair K were to call the, the, call Blake and say, hey, I don't like the paint color ordinance, I'm going to vote against it. Right now, no meeting, one on one, no meeting, okay? Then Commissioner Scalco, you call, and I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name, you call Blake and you say, hey, what is the commission, you know, I'm, I'm talking about this, this pain ordinance, and what did Commissioner K say? Well, Commissioner K said he's voting against it, okay, I'm voting against it. Now you know that he's voting against it, he doesn't know that you talked, but now two of you have communicated and you know what he's saying, okay? Then Commissioner Bonnie Bailey, she calls, gets the same information, right now we're still okay, we're not a majority, right? But, but Blake has communicated Commissioner K's preferences to two of you, so now three of you are in the mix. If the other Commissioner Bailey now calls and says, where's the, where's the chair on this? I'm trying to get a gauge of what, what my commissioners think. And Blake, and Blake would never do this, by the way, he's a great city manager, so he'll never do, he'll be like, no, no, Brown Act, Brown Act. But just for example, he says he's voting against it. That is a hub and spoke. Four of you don't know, but it has been communicated, four of you don't know what four of you are saying, but four of you now have communicated and have knowledge of what the commissioner or the chair is saying. He knows, you know, you know, or Bonnie knows, and Dwight knows, that's for you, that's a violation of the Brown Act. It gets very tricky, okay? So what you have to remember, the, the advice that I give to council and commission is just don't ever ask that question, don't say, well, what, what does Carol think? Be like, you know what, she's not here, let's not, let's not talk about it. That's, that's the best advice I can give, do not ever ask like, what is the other commissioner thinking? What is the other council member thinking? Because you don't know who else they've talked to, you don't know where the spokes go, okay? Daisy chain is, how many of you played in summer camp or in college to the telephone game? Okay, Daisy chain is just basically telephone, so Mayor Clarno calls Councilmember Hubbard and says, I'm voting no on the resolution tonight. Okay, it's just two of them, right? Then Mayor Hubbard calls, Commissioner, too many of you, too many of you. Councilmember Hubbard calls Councilmember Brian and says, hey, I'm voting no. That's a, that's a daisy chain, right? Because three of them have now daisy chained their way down the process. So the other trick is, you know, basically, if you talk to one other person or for the commission, if you talk to two other people, just stop, right? If two of you have a conversation, all of you should just be like, let us all swear to not talk to anyone else about this, okay? I like to be extra cautious, and I would say if two of you talk about something, then you're done. And if somebody else comes in and say, hey, guys, what are you talking about? We can't tell you, I mean, then you'll be like, I don't want to make them feel like they're excluded. Just say, you know, remember what that attorney said about the Brown Act? Two of us have talked, we're done, I can't, I can't talk to you about it, safest thing to do, okay? The other thing you'll notice that staff will do, Jessica, myself, Wendy, Blake, we will usually send emails to council and commission and committee members in the blind, and what I call we B C C. That is to make sure that no one accidentally hits reply all and says, well, I'm in favor of this, because then that's an unwitting Brown Act violation, because you've communicated your desires to the whole group. So sometimes you may be annoyed with us and say, why are they always B C C'ing us? Because then I can't talk to the other commissioners, yeah, we do it on purpose, okay? So, I'm going to, I don't know why I kept these slides in, because we can talk about serial meetings forever. All you need to know is you can't do them. This is an important point, yes. Okay, I'll go back and talk about that, thank you, I, yeah, I scrolled through it quickly. Yes.
Could you real quickly define what business is? I got called out for a violation whenever that's been clarity about how we do something, it's pretty, what everybody.
I'm basically in training, so I sent out an email to Blake and the rest of the Finance Committee saying, how do we do this? What does this look like, what's the language look like to describe that? And that was shut down because you're creating serial communication. But the decision's already made, this, our policy's out there, I just need to know what it is.
So a reminder that as your city attorney, I get paid to be paranoid, right? My job is to be, I, I'm called the no fun guy. My job is to be no fun. All kidding aside, my job is to really steer this body, these bodies to the safest shore possible, right? So if we're, if we're gone a boat and I'm your navigator and there's rough waters over here, but it has great rewards at the end, and calmer waters with okay rewards that'll get you to where you need to go, I'm always going to be like, take, take the calm waters. So with that in mind, it is always safer if you're talking about anything related to your role as a committee member or commissioner, to just not talk about it to a majority unless you're in a meeting. Now, I will say that what you talked about procedurally is probably not a Brown Act violation, but as I like to say, or as we do in training, we say there's the actual impropriety or, or bad act, and then there's the appearance of impropriety. And if the public thinks that you're violating the Brown Act, it can be just as devastating if, as if you actually violate the Brown Act because the public trust is the most sacred thing that we have as public officials, right? The, the, the public needs to have trust that we're doing our jobs correctly, so that's why I say probably what you said procedurally was okay, but I would still say, yeah, don't do it. Because then it's, it's hard, if, basically, my rule is if you think, hmm, is this a Brown Act violation, what should you assume? It is, yeah, that is, Mr. No Fun says, if, if I'm like, is this Brown Act? Just assume it is, you know? And because you can always wait and talk to, or you know, Blake is real good to, to talk to. Your chair is a good person to talk to, so that's the meaning. Um, your chair is a good person to talk to, um, so that's the meaning. So something about social media posts, there's a very strict rule. And you're going to all really be like, man, this guy really is no fun. It, it came in about two years ago. It's AB nine nine two, Assembly Bill nine nine two passed in Sacramento regarding social media posts. Basically says, everything I said about a majority is even more strict in social media posts. Basically, if one of your fellow commissioners or council members posts something on social media. And just one more person likes it. Smiley face emojis it or comments on it. That is a Brown Act violation. What they're trying to clamp down on basically, uh, is to not comment on each other's social media posts. And it's horrible. And I have people come up to me afterwards and say, well, wait a minute. You know, I've been friends with this person for 20 years and you're telling me that now that we're on the Planning Commission together, or now that we're on the City Council together, I can't like their social media post? Yeah, pretty much. That's what the rule, the law they put into place.
Just one line?
Yeah. Just any, anybody. So Commissioner K, if you have a social media post and you're friends with, um, Commissioner Grace Sanchez. And you've been friends for time immemorial, and you, she likes one of your posts. Related to city business, of course, then it's a Brown Act violation, okay? So be very careful. Um, when I was, uh, some, a lot of you know that I was a council member as well. When I was on the council, I unfriended all my fellow council members. Because I'm like, I'll see y'all when I'm termed out. But until then, we should keep ourselves separate.
So we just passed Measure D, a tax measure. I worked on social media to promote that. And so what you're saying is even though the city council asked the city to vote for that essentially. They couldn't like my posts to reaffirm that they agree that.
Correct.
They should, okay. So basically, we can't show visual support as a group or a measure like that.
Correct.
That seems wild, but okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's different if, you know, that endorsement was posted on the city's official website, or if there was a. Website for the measure run by a, a private citizen committee, that's different. But that, that, that's getting deep into the weeds, and we can talk about that if there's another one. Um, very important rule, these prohibitions are attached to you as. Commit, as public officials and you only, meaning that unidirectional communications are permitted. So one of the questions we'll get is, well, why can the city attorney or the city manager send all of you a communication? Uh, because we can't, because we are not deemed public officials for purposes of Brown Act, so we can send you instructions saying. You know, the agenda for tonight on this item, it's going to be pull, or we receive public comments about this item. And it's okay as long as we send it unidirectionally and we BCC it. What we can't do is we can't say, here's this agenda item, you know, um. And three out of the four council members are in favor of it. You know, we'll never do that, because then we, we've daisy chained it or hub and spoke it, okay? But we can send you information, but then you can't go back and say, the common one is, um. You know, I've seen in other cities where you send an email to the whole council, and then a council member replies all and says. Man, I can't wait to kill this thing. This, that actually has happened, right? Because they're just, I, I've, I've heard this for so many times, I'm, this, we've been talking about this for months, and I just can't wait to kill it. Ah, that's a Brown Act violation, right? And then the, the way to correct it is we have to publish it to everybody. That, that, that it was said and it was done in the meeting to cure the violation. So careful with that. And that's why we send things to all BCC, so someone doesn't accidentally hit reply all, okay?
Yes. I just, when it comes to staff sending emails, uh, could you go over how it's appropriate potentially to reach out to the city manager, planning? Uh, planner or city attorney, uh, directly with any questions or concerns, as long as that, that individual doesn't create a hub and spoke.
Yeah, so great question, um, uh, council member. So. It's okay for you as individuals to reach out to staff. That's more a policy decision. Um, so what your, you know, if your chair, the mayor says, yeah, you can call the city manager. And, and if you guys have a standing thing where you can call Jessica to ask questions when you get the packet, that's fine. She's, and Jessica will know, like, okay, I'm not going to tell anybody else what questions you ask. So that's perfectly fine. You can do that. Um, you know, Planning Commission for me, because I'm a city attorney and I do bill, you know, I have to make a living. You know, I would make sure that you get permission from the mayor or city manager, like, don't start calling me for hours at a time. Because I like you all, but I do, you know, I'm going to bill it, so be careful. I'm kidding, but I'm not kidding, you know, because, so make sure. But it, that has less to do with legal stuff than just procedural. Um, okay, when is a meeting not a meeting? We've sort of covered this already, so I'll go through it quickly and I have. Oh, I'm already at 20. Can I go five more minutes? Okay. Um, so individual contacts, right? One on one, that's not a majority, it's fine. Uh, conferences and seminars, the law says that if all of you, for example, go to a planning conference on land use. And you're all learning information together, you're not making any decision that impacts the city. You're not talking about, and because people will get confused, they'll say, well, we're learning about city business, right? We're learning about stuff that's going to affect our decisions. But as long as you're taking the information in from another source and not having to make any decisions, that's fine. Okay, if you all go to another body of the agency when it is open and noticed meeting of that body, that's fine. So best example I can give you, uh, planning commissioners is you've worked really hard on a, um. Development project, and you've recommended it for approval to the city council, and you just have to know how the city council is going to go, right? And you want to be there in person. So you come, and you realize there's four of you. This happens all the time. Uh, we, we will get calls like, there's four of us here. Can we say? Yeah, because you're not, at that point, you're not making a decision. You're not there as the planning commission, you're there to watch another body. Another great example is board supervisors. They may be taking some action that affects, you know, land use or planning for this, for the city of Dunsmere, and you want to go watch it. You can go as long as it's an open and no's meeting of that body. Now, the warning is, let's say, board supervisors, you go. And one of you gets up to the boat to talk and public comment, to make a comment, and there's four of you, that could be a Brown Act violation. Because you might get up and say, I'm here speaking in my individual capacity, but I'm on the planning commission, and I'm telling you that when this comes to us, I will. Uh-oh. You know, and some good governance, you know, person is there recording you, they're going to be like, there were four planning commissioners there. That could be a Brown Act violation, so. I would urge caution. If you go to a meeting, my advice to all of you, and I say this to the council too, is don't say anything. Just don't comment. I know you're like, well, it's my right, I must present it. True, but you're also planning commissioner, right? And it's a public trust thing. Mayor?
Since most meetings are recorded these days, and some are published, like I know, we publish ours. I'm not sure if the Board of Supervisors does or not. I know why Rika does. How does that affect someone's ability to say, go through, I mean, or look at the minutes and see how that. What, if any comments have been made by another member of said body?
Um.
Well, so, you know, an example, we go, I go to the Planning Commission. I get up, I say something, and then, um. Two other council members read the minutes from that meeting.
Oh, I see. I've never, you know, I've never thought about that. No one's ever brought that up. It's a good question. I would think that. That might be construed as a Brown Act violation. If somebody were to get the two council members under oath at a deposition and say, did you? Did you see his comment and did you, did you see what he said? That, well, you know, I think under the letter, a lot's Brown Act violation. Yeah, we can talk under attorney client privilege, and I have advice what you would do in that case, but I'm not going to say it if you're at a public meeting. That's a good, I mean, but that's, I mean, all kidding aside, that's a good reason for if you do see a majority at a meeting. I have other clients who, they have a, uh, informal agreement set if they see a majority there, someone just leaves. They just flip a coin, we're like, one of you, you gotta go, just to avoid that problem.
Quick point of clarification, because this has come up over the years, um, when council members feel passionate about an, an issue. And they go to Planning Commission to express their opinion on it. Well, I think it is their right to be at a planning commission meeting to, to hear. It's probably more of a prejudiced issue for a council, but could you just speak to that? Because we've had in the past council members insist on it and get up and speak, and, you know, we, we'd like your advice on that.
Yeah, so for council. And even commission, planning commission, that isn't so much a Brown Act question as it's a due process question. When you're. And when you, especially planning commission, you deal with a lot of land use issues, you deal with, you deal with development agreements. Anytime you're deciding on the right of a private citizen or business to do something, and I'll use Mr. Magania since he's here. If he were to come and he has his business and you'd say, you know, and I'm not going to talk about the one he wants just to not make him uncomfortable, let's say he wants to like. And I'm trying to think of something whimsical. Um, I almost said brownies, but you sell your cannabis dealer, so you might actually sell brownies. Um. Flower shop, he wants to open a flower shop. He wants to convert his cannabis deal to a flower shop. And we're going to, Plan Commission is going to hear whether or not to grant him a, a zoning variance to open a flower shop. He has a vested due process right to do with his property as he pleases. Because he has a due process right to a full and fair hearing, it is improper. For a member of a government body to predetermine that issue before the public hearing on the permit. What that means is you cannot prejudge it. You can't be like, I'm going to vote no, or I'm going to vote yes. You can't go and look independently at the site and do your own investigation. You have to limit your decision to the facts at the hearing. So at the public hearing, you open the public hearing, you take testimony, evidence, whatever Mr. Magania wants to present, whatever any opponents might want to present. Then you weigh and consider all that evidence. If you receive public comments, you send it to the, to staff, to Jessica, who then sends it to the entire body. So that everybody is looking at the same information. And then the chair will say, did everybody receive the packet of public comments received? Yes. Okay, so everyone has had a chance to consider it. Okay, now we're going to deliberate. That ensures that Mr. Magania or any other property owner has due process rights. So to go back to, um, Councilmember Brian's example, if you get up as a council member at the Planning Commission and say, I am against this. I will not support it when it comes to the council, you violated Mr. Magania's due process rights because. The hearing hasn't happened with this city council yet, and you've already said, I'm against it, and he's going to be like, you will hear from my lawyer. And then the lawyer will call me and I'll be like, you must now recuse yourself. Okay? This is, this one is, I mean, that's a, that's a deep one. That takes some, some, some doing, so I don't want to, we could do the whole meeting on this. Correct. Maybe, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Actually.
Yeah.
If I recused myself, um, because a, a neighbor was going to come before the planning commission. I could still, I could recuse myself beforehand, and then I could, could I as a, um, a citizen. Talk about my concerns about it? In other words, I would recuse myself.
It depends. This question, the, the answer is it depends. So there is a, what's called a per se. Conflict of interest if you're deciding anything within 500 yards of feet, five feet or yards, feet. If you're within 500 feet of your property, you are what's called per se conflict of interest, which means you can't decide the issue. It's, you, you're too close.
That's correct. I've been wondering, uh, uh, I, I would recuse myself. But a, as a citizen, if I had a concern about certain plans, would I be allowed to speak?
So the short answer is yes. Again, no fun guy here is going to say, my recommendation would be no, because what you, what you open up. What, what you open up the possibility is somebody is going to say, you're so, you're a member of this commission. So what you say to this commission as a fellow commissioner, even when you say I'm private citizen, is going to hold greater weight.
So I should not do that.
I would advise no, because my job is to protect the entire city. Now, if you say, David, I don't care what you say, I have a First Amendment right to go up there and speak, I'm going to be like, you do what you gotta do.
No, I'm just asking a.
No, 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 I'm, and I'm not arguing with, I'm just saying, remember, I'm the safe guy. I'm like.
Right.
You know, I would tell you, we, if, if somebody challenged that, we'd probably win. We'd be like, no. Commissioner Scalco does not give up her First Amendment rights, and she gets to say what you want to say, and we'll probably win. But you'll have to pay me money to go to court and win that, right? And so you don't want, you know, I'd be like, you don't want me to have to do that.
I want to do the right thing for it.
Yeah, yeah. So, but it's a great question. These are great, great questions. All right, I'm going to run through this real quick, and then I'm going to let the other folks take over. Um, other non-meANings, social or ceremonial events, great example today is you all got invited to pizza. So when we were here beforehand, before the meeting got called, we were eating pizza, we're talking, that's fine. Uh, I get a lot, we get a lot of questions around Super Bowl time, like, oh, can we go to the Super Bowl? Um, you know, people belong to Rotary Clubs, Elf Clubs, Friends of the Library, you all do great, you know. Social events, uh, you know, uh, all things, and you're all manning the beer booth or whatever, that's all fine. Just what I always tell people is talk about your family, talk about your kids, your grandkids, talk about your favorite TV shows, that's all fine. That's how, you can. Seven of you can get together and play mahjong if you want. Just don't talk about city business when you do it, okay? Ad hoc committees, we can talk about some other time. If you have to, if you hear the word ad hoc committees, immediately talk to Blake or Jessica or me. Okay, um. Non-member attendance at standing committee meetings, we already kind of covered, and the community meetings, we, we covered. All right, I'm going to blow through this. Regular special adjourned, uh, emergency meetings, that's why you have staff. Hosting, that's why Wendy, she's awesome, she knows what she's doing. Uh, notice Wendy, and she can talk to me and she knows what she's doing. When you, when it has to be posted, again, no, you guys aren't posting your own agendas. Um, okay, so last thing I'll say real quick about writings distributed on, uh, down to packets, nope. That's Wendy. 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 Uh, that you, you desk staff, if there's something you want to talk about. So remember, I'll just say you can only talk about what's on the agenda. There are very limited exceptions for talking about something not on the agenda, but it basically has to be an emergency. And I've done this for a lot, many years, and I've never really seen an emergency where a city council needs to, to put something on there. Uh, actually, I saw it once. There was a flood on a freeway and they needed to get Public Works in there to do something, but that's it. Okay, last thing I'll say, um, and this is, this can take an hour, is public comment, I will just leave you all. With, uh, the advice which you all know is that everybody has a right to speak. When you're the chair and you guys will rotate chairs, everybody has a right to speak. You should give everyone the equal amount of time to speak. So if you start at three minutes, you should stay at three minutes. You can go down to two minutes, you can go to one minute, but you should do it at the beginning, and then everybody gets the same, like, so once you're locked in, you're locked in. So it's always a good idea, if you start a meeting and there's like a roomful of people, you should ask Wendy, like, you guys do comment cards?
No.
Okay, um. You know, just be like, how many people do you think are going to speak? If you think there's going to be a lot of people speaking and you think you need to limit time. Make that decision early, before the meeting. Don't, the, the worst thing is you do ten people who speak for three minutes, and then you're like, we still got 20 people. Okay, everyone else gets a minute, because you don't know if the first 10 were pro and the last 20 are con. And the con people are like, you did that on purpose. Right? Remember, appearance of impropriety.
Good question on that. Can you change the, uh, minutes per item? Like, a general public comment be three minutes, but you know, there's one item where everyone's going to speak on, can you go down to?
Yes, yes, yeah, and I've seen that done. They have, so a public comment is three, and then they get to an item, and you're like, we're going to do one. Again, though, it, it, it makes people angry when you do it. So I usually recommend to clients, like, just start at the beginning and be like, today, everyone's going to get a minute. But it, but again, that's not, that's just my advice. Question? No, the law doesn't prescribe, I, you know, minute, I've never seen anyone like do 30 seconds. I think that'd be great, not, sorry. Sorry, if you've done it in 30 seconds, if anyone's done 30 seconds, that, that sounds, to me, that just seems like you'd have people yelling at you real fast. It doesn't seem, I mean, basically by the time you come up here and say your name, 10 seconds has passed, so. I've seen a minute to three minutes, and that's, it's always in that range. But again, there's no rule for it. Um, remember, again, well, it's a Wendy thing, but. Um, there's no requirement of registering, giving your name, they do not need to be a resident of Dunsmere. So they'll come up and they'll say, I'm here to talk about this project, and you'll be like, sir, what's your name? I'm not giving you my name. They don't have to. Okay, I'm not telling you my name. Uh, where do you live? I don't have to tell you where I live. That's true. They can come from Sacramento if they want, okay? Everybody gets a, gets a chance to speak, okay? Um, only exception is if they're disruptive. In which case you do have a right as the parliamentarian to say, you know, you're out of order. Obviously, threat to your safety or the safety of the public is an entirely different ball of wax, you know? Racist, inappropriate comments can also just be nipped in the bud. There's a whole section on that. Um, because those are deemed to not be part of anything legitimately on the agenda, so you can cut it off, but that's separate training. Um, all right, any questions for me?
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, way at the beginning, you talked about, just on the first screen, it said, um. Everyone is allowed to come to a meeting, city council meeting.
Yes.
Uh, how is that, I hear about closed sessions. What is, what is the difference? You know, if, if it's saying that, then why are we having closed session?
Great, great question. So closed sessions, under the law, there are, under the Brown Act, there are a limited number of topics that are allowed to be discussed in closed session. Because the legislature, Sacramento has determined that those items are of significant importance to the body. That giving that information would give somebody out there an unfair advantage or detriment to the city. So the basic ones are, uh, employment agreements, or not, employment negotiations. Right? All employment agreements have to be ratified in public because it's using taxpayer money to pay, for example, Blake or me. But the negotiations for, um, public, for employees can be, uh, confidential. Personnel matters, right, where someone is being disciplined. Uh, that, that, the due process rights of the individual and the privacy rights of the individual outweigh the public's right to know, so those are private. Any litigation, so if the city's being sued, you're not going to have a public meeting on litigation, be like, what's our legal strategy? That's no good, right? Property negotiation, yeah, anything where you, where you're like, we need a plan on how to get the best deal for the city or to win this litigation or. In, in infringing on individual persons' rights are gonna be closed session, but they're, they're limited in nature. You know, almost always, unless they're very common, you get the city attorney, you know, we always talk about, we, we review the closed session items to make sure, like, yeah, that we, we can talk about. And they're, yeah, they're pretty sure, that's a good question. Other questions? Yes.
Will you be sharing these slides?
Yes, they're, they're now part of the Zoom recording, but if you want them, if you want the big one. You can email me and I will give you the big one. If you need help sleeping at night, it's a lot of fun reading. I'm all kidding aside, I'm happy to share, you know, you all get it, just talk to Blake or Jessica and then I can give it to them and then they can get out.
When or where is a Brown Act violation discussed? How's that dealt with? What's the process?
That's a, sorry, that was the main thing. So if you commit a Brown Act violation, what happens? So what happens is any member of the public or the Attorney General. Or the District Attorney can allege a violation of Brown Act. And so it's first in a written communication to the body saying, on this date, at this time, we believe you committed a Brown Act violation because you did X, Y, and Z. Then they have to give us time to what's called cure and correct. So if we, if we find that there's a violation, then the way to cure and correct it is to take the matter up again at an open and public meeting. And redo it and revote it in an open and public meeting. So for example, if four of you talked about something. And then they say it's a Brown Act violation and decided something, then they make it and we have, and we can see, we have to see if we can cure and correct it. Okay? If we refuse, then they can bring an action to compel us to a court order to redo the item or void the item. That's the dangerous thing. There are some things where if the court says, you know, you can't cure this, like. Again, not to, just an example, let's say, three council members met in privacy, private to decide who they were gonna give a, a big contract to. The court may say, there's no way to fix that. So you know what, we're gonna give it to the other person and we're gonna make you pay damages. Or we're gonna make you pay damages to the person that didn't get it, because we don't know what you would have done if you hadn't had that illegal Brown Act violation meeting. That's the biggest fear. There are, not to scare you, but there are certain provisions of the Brown Act where if you violate it willfully. And I use the word willfully, so not just like, oh, we had a conversation and we forgot that I hit reply all. If you willfully conspire to violate the Brown Act, you could be brought up on criminal charges. I say that, but please, like, the reason I don't say that is, people will freak out and they'll start to overthink it. You're all good people, no one is willfully being like, let's meet behind the shrubs over there and talk about what we're gonna do. If you do that, I mean, honestly, I mean, I'm kidding, if you do that and you're like, we're gonna do it because we don't want the public to know. You're not gonna, you're gonna tell me and I'm gonna be like, you need a criminal attorney now. I can't help you with that. Okay.
I recently joined the local library board in Dunsmere. And I was wondering, as far as a conflict of interest, if I were to become, go before the city council. For fundraising efforts or like something about our building where we wanted to. Help city council, like, make sure the library gets certain funding. How would, would I have to, like, leave the meeting? Why they discuss that, or if it was something about the library on the Planning Commission?
We should talk about it.
Okay.
The question is maybe.
Okay.
You know, if you, if you hang around with me long enough and ask me these sorts of questions, you'll learn that my most common question or answer is maybe. Cause it's fact specific. So we can talk, let's talk afterwards, I'll be around.
Okay.
But it's a good question, and I'm, I love that Commissioner Bailey, that's a great question, because those are the things you, you have to start thinking about as a commissioner, right? And, and. God bless you all for doing the work, because it's hard work, you don't get paid anything. And things like this happen where, you know, there will be nights where you're like, why am I doing this? Gosh, I can't like on social media, I can't do this, I gotta think about this. But it's very, you know, you do really good work, so I, I mean this sincerely, thank you for doing it, but it comes with some thinking. All right. Next, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll just, well, the next up is, is Gary, right? What's your presentation, Gary?
So, I think this, I'm just gonna applaud you all for having a joint meeting. I worked for a lot of different agencies throughout California. And the one thing that really bugs me is the. Dialogues between the commission and the city council, and oftentimes, they never see each other until there's an appeal file. On something that the Planning Commission did. Then they come in, you know, and they're looking like, that's kind of a negative thing, and this is a really positive. So getting the groups together, having some dialogue, making sure there's some consistency and harmony. And how you're, you're kinda moving them, moving the city along in a positive direction. So. We'll start with the beginning. Yeah, so I, this is great, okay, thanks. So I guess I can walk around to. That's kind of a better. So I'm Gary Grayson, I work with. Jessica quite a bit, and so this is, so this is fun to be, it's one of my favorite things to do. And so. There we go. So, source of. Power to regular land use, course in planning, everything kinda seems to evolve around land use and how we decide. What our future's gonna look like. So it arose from the government movements as the response to the sanitary conditions. There's a, it's a body desire for ready in private market forces. That need government regulations based on government's police power. Land uses evaluated by health, safety, and welfare. Key milestones nationwide include the nineteen oh nine Los Angeles zoning ordinance that limited industrial uses. Then to nineteen sixteen, New York imposed the first comprehensive zoning code. Then nineteen twenty-two, the state created a state enabling. Act, and probably the most, the strongest cases in nineteen twenty-six. Buclis versus Ambler upholds the constitution of zoning. So zoning is constitutionally supported not only nationwide, but now it's a, you know, state reporting and the state constitution. Key milestones in California include nineteen twenty-seven passed a law. That required all cities to have master plans and counties. Twenty-eight, standard planning, midland act. And then zoning law, planning laws have really been started in California and moved on to other parts of the nation. Probably due to so much growth in California. So land use regulations today, the general plan is really your bible. It lays out the jurisdictions, the future development plans, through a series of policy statements. And it's a policy document, specific plans are kind of a mini general plan for an area. The zoning code provides detailed land uses and design regulations that implement the general plan. And other planning documents include master plans, area plans, vision plans, but these aren't defined by, by law, but the other ones follow. So under the government code establishes planning and enabling the planning commission. And planning is typically is assigned planning level tasks that can be carried on by the city council, provides recommendations. So you're an advisory to the city council, but you do take some judgmental actions that can be appealed. And for city of Dunsmere, there's only a limited section in the code that talks about the planning commission refers to. The state government code, which is unusual, but most agencies have their own enabling app for planning permission. So under the code, planning is typically assigned planning tasks. So there's, there's no local regulations I mentioned, so we refer to the government code. And that, so the commission is supposed to prepare periodically, review the necessary general plan. They implement the general plan through actions such as specific plans, zoning codes, subdivision ordinance, updates. And planning commission is responsible for annually reviewing the capital improvement program, I'm not sure you've been doing that. You're endeavoring to promote public interest in common. And comment on your understanding of the general plan and regulations related to that. You consult and advise with public officials and agencies, public utility companies, civic, educational, professional. Organizations and citizens groups to implement the general plan. And you promote coordination of local plans and perform other functions as directed by the city council. So we have our general plan, two thousand and six is fairly recent, I think it's a, a great plan, it lays out. What we need to do to see. Community development as what you see. So in the general plan, there's really the constitution for the city. For planning and development, it provides a long-range vision of the community for conservation, development over the next thirty years. And it's a basis for land use decisions, so really the most important thing, the planning commission and the city council. Can do is get a really good understanding of the general plan as they're making decisions. It identifies important community issues that promotes community participation and sets ground rules. General plan is mandated to have several elements. And we always start with the land use, then there's conservation, the circulation, housing, open space, conservation, noise. Safety, air quality, and environmental justice. Optional elements can come out of that. With the city of Dunsmere. They combine the open space and conservation elements. We currently don't have air quality or environmental injustice element, but we do have a historic preservation element. So the aspiration of a general plan is what they, what we want to see the future of. It's a succinct description of the community's values. But then it's mandated by state law. And there's optional economic development aspects to a general plan. So it really is expression of what we wanna see our community look like in twenty, thirty years. It's not quantifiable or time dependent, so there, there are goals. The first part of the general plan, you start at the top and very broad goals of what we want to see. The next level. Are policies in the general plan. And so those are specific statements that guide decision to be committed to a particular course of action. And then there's the standards, which is a rule of measurement, so your general plan might have specific standards they want to follow. More housing in certain areas, a certain level of quality and quality. And the general plan program is an actual action on things you want to do, like update the safety element or the. Or you wanna do a zoning code update that identifies the downtown as a strategic plan. And the housing element is probably the only element that requires periodic updating through the state. And so right now, we're in the sixth cycle, which is twenty twenty-three, thirty-one, we're in good shape. So it was certified housing element of the state Department of Community Development. But it's really important to really focus on that, because that's some of the more current information about the community. It's gotta be consistent with the other parts of the general plan. And so if the general plan's a little bit old, you always turn to the housing to get an idea of current demographics and economics. It's intended to facilitate housing development and actions to remove barriers to housing production. And so and there's a zoning code, which was updated twenty twenty-three, not too long ago. And that implements the policies of the general plan. So there's specific regulations on how private property is to be developed, design standards, building coverage. Building heights, setbacks, and procedures for review for, for developmental projects, for example. Then there's the California environmental policy, I can do a whole series on that, but it falls asleep. But I think it's important to understand that it's an information document to inform decision makers. The implications of what you're making decisions on for projects. Well, I'll call it CECL, but it's intended to inform decision makers about the effects. It identifies ways to avoid environmental damage, prevents avoidable environmental damage. Discloses to the public why a project may or may not be needed and enhances public participation. CECL applies, this is very important, to all discretionary actions and a discretionary actions and action. That you have to make a value judgment on. And so most of the projects that you see come forward to the planning commission have some level of CECL review. Most of them are gonna be what's considered exempt, because there's exemptions to them, but you still have to. Qualify and make decisions on the CECL action before you take action on the project, if, if it's an approval. And does not apply to ministerial actions like issuing a building permit. Or going through a checklist to make sure everything's in compliance. So as I mentioned, most projects are subject to CECL under CECL. And Jessica will be doing, actually doing a lot of the CECL work and when she brings projects to you, it's always a CECL. Category in the staff report. Definition of the planning commission is really a quasi judicial body, because it applies existing laws and policies, specific development proposals. This role involves holding public hearings, reviewing evidence, making findings, you're sexually, are a judge for the community. And so you'd be participating in development of the general plan, housing element, to facilitate community engagement. You conduct study sessions and other forums, and you review general plan housing elements periodically. You make recommendations to the city council for adoption of regulations and general plan policies. So individuals, you look at individual development projects, site plan, design review. Condition use permits of variances tentative maps. You also, a lot of times will do something that the city is doing for consistency with the general plan or zoning. And you're an advisory to city council for things like zone placements. So some of the desired authorities. The planning community knows, we know a lot about. Very special expertise that no one else has. That's why we thought. To be aware with the environment of the planning, beware of public opinion, and respect for. Maintain an open mind. Now to listen to new ideas. Having the ability to see the strengths and weaknesses of problems. Need to have some free freedom for its fine to work in levels. We need to see things based on facts, we need to stand in the community development. In zone, they cannot usually report. Parents. Have a, if the guy only needs to spend time. Required spending in three weeks and ten weeks. Have a community community process, you always be. About a period from the future, the ability of the community to treat this. So we talked a little about, we found mistakes, but. Can you find the navigating abilities or give us access? You know, we talked about. And all the leaders, it's fair, it's really important that affect the community. It's really important that affect the community, they have my behaviors. From my experience, not because of how it is, you know, not for here to go, go, oh, you have something even saying to me, you know, there's something that means means we're all because you are the community, there's not that of somebody that I would be happy to do this with. What was your thought about the community? Well, you know, very, very now looking back, same with aspect of the other one. Now completely, I can read it, but it's in some parts. So we wanted to, you know, talk about giving them the community, you know, the things that all the community do without without the notes, that are why the public can't and without the plan, it's not that we that we can't like a, a, a meeting, the rule is then as a clear in place of usually the the plan, the general law and these interviews, allowing the doctoring at the firm, depending on you know, really be careful. For that you have to be close and hold on the, the
You don't want to be showing up to meetings unprepared. It's a little bit embarrassing when questions come up. So you should be thoroughly familiar with the RIT site plan, the review, and staff report in each case. You hear, you should visit the site. Every, every commissioner should visit the site, look at the surroundings, see what you're looking at, review all the reports, the traffic analysis. Don't be afraid to ask staff, particularly ahead of time before the meeting, because if you ask staff at the meeting, it comes, it becomes kind of cumbersome. Oftentimes, staff doesn't have a good answer without going back and researching it. So it can delay the applicant. And, you know, that can be costly for everybody. I'm not saying that's not, you know, it's important to answer important questions at the meeting. And sometimes those questions come up at the meeting, the item can be continued with those answers to come back. Being afraid to disagree. Planning Commissioner is a collaborative body, planning commission, and relies on multiple perspectives and shares information from various sources to provide a balanced decision that emphasizes what's best for the community. I think it's a healthy discussion between the commissioners. There's different perspectives. And you need to be open to listening to your fellow commissioners, different perspectives. You don't have to agree with them. And it's important to get your, your understanding of the project out and your perspectives. Accepting or acting on an incomplete application. I know that our job as city planners, we take in an application, there's checklist, we make sure, you know, the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed. And we want to make sure that you get as much information as you need to make an objective decision for the community. Oftentimes, we'll miss something. You know, it's oftentimes you're out there, you know your community better than oftentimes we do, probably much more so. So if we miss something, don't be afraid to say, hey, we missed something. Let's continue that item. Let's research it and come back. So you all want to have a comfort in the project description and making sure you understand what your decision's about and the basis for your decision. Accepting or acting on an incomplete application. I think I just said that. Go back. Making your mind up beforehand. This is commonly done. I see it all the time. Commissioners come in, start the meeting, they don't even listen to public comment. They go, I already think that there's something, you know, I don't like this project, or I love this project, and I've already got my decision. So the purpose of planning commission is to provide an objective decisions in the community's best interest and upon facts and evidence presented. So there's oftentimes, you don't really know the whole picture until you hear what the public has to say. Sometimes they bring up things that none of us thought about. So presenting yourself with a decision ahead of time, pre-guesses what you're, what the whole thing's, what you're supposed to be doing. So always recommend that you go in there with an open mind and listen, read the staff report, listen to the public, and participate in that before you express your, your opinions. Getting political, very common in small communities and all communities. But you need to be serving the community by providing reasonable, reasoned, objective recommendations on land use and, and community development policies that you have in the books. Your job is to make decisions and recommendations that are consistent with the city planning laws and standards and decisions. Commissioners, I don't recommend consulting with city council members. It, you know, we'll get, you'll get oftentimes a situation where if it's a developer really wants this project, they're going to start calling commissioners or city council members. And they're going to want your view, or they're going to want your side. And, you know, that's up to you how you behave. But I always recommend the response is that, well, if I tell you how I feel about this, then I, that's kind of privileged and I'm not sharing that with my fellow commissioners. And so to me, for me to respond with an opinion about your project, but pre-guess what, and really not be fair to my fellow commissioners, I'd rather talk about it as a whole with the planning commission as a whole. So and that always, you know, helps a lot. Because sometimes you feel, you feel obligated to respond to someone that's investing in your community. And it's a good thing to have that investment. But again, you have to kind of, you're the judge. The, the politics really, you're a technical advisory committee. And so you can always be appealed to the city council, and it becomes a little bit more political because they're elected body. And, you know, that's more of a game on their side. And you're, you're basically there, the council's kind of dependent on you to provide an objective decision. But they're oftentimes will make decisions that may not be what you've made the decision on. But that's kind of what their role is, goes well, understanding what, you know, what the community needs politically. Overstepping, overstepping your authority. Be sure to, you know, make sure that what your, your role as a planning commission is, you know, basically zoning code, general plan, and understanding land use. That's a lot to understand. But when you get into things like some of the potholes in the city or maybe you're not happy with an employee out there. That's not really pertinent to what the planning commission's purview is. So you want to be able to focus on what your purview is. And if you have problems with any of that, you go to Blake. That's what Blake's for, so. So that concludes my discussion, but I, you know, certainly encourage discussion among, you know, about any of the things I mentioned here. And, you know, I think it's really wonderful. We've got two new planning commissioners that joined us. And so we have the, the full body here, which is really amazing. So happy to answer any questions that you have, or maybe you all want to talk a little bit about this stuff.
I've been on the commission for a few years now, and I've always wondered, you know, we get recommendations from staff, we can have a perfect application. But I still, as a voice in my community and caring about my community, I don't want to be a rubber stamp. I, in other words, everything can be perfect on, on that application. But I still have, we still have the option of having a decision on it regardless of perfect application.
Absolutely.
And so that's what I wanted to point out, because when I first got on the commission, I, I didn't realize that. And so there are certain things. There's one paragraph about the peace of our, our neighborhood. That, you know, there's, there's, there's things in, for, for our town that we, we have all volunteered, that we care about. And I just wanted to say that even though that it's a perfect application, we still can vote the way we feel.
Absolutely. And then I think what's important is to continue to look at the general plan, the zoning. And if there's error, if there's things that are inconsistent with those feelings that you have as a commission as a whole, I think it's healthy to have that discussion so that you can amend the general plan from time to time to address those things. Because oftentimes, you don't want to be looked at as being arbitrary in preparation with your decisions. But oftentimes, most of the general plan are broad policies, and they can support how you feel about neighborhood compatibility.
Correct.
If, you know, that's, that's really why, you know, you're a member of the community and you are the perfect person to be the planning commissioner versus someone that's outside.
Yeah.
So that kind of separates you from, you know, just looking at a general plan like a machine.
Right.
So, yeah, totally agree with you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yes.
On your descriptions up there on the role of the commissioner, is, is that in a binder? Where do you have that, those definitions? Is that in, at the city hall?
Well, we'll have them, we'll have the PowerPoint. And I noticed I kind of made some errors with the PowerPoint. I've got some redundant pages. But those are things that I just put up because I've been doing this for thirty plus years. And I run into these things with planning commissioners all the time. And so a lot of it's just my experience sharing with you. And, and I know you've been doing this for two years at least. So you, you've got a pretty good, you've been seasoned to the point where you know what you're doing. Some of the newer commissioners will probably have these situations, so.
I just think they're help, it's helpful for whenever there is a vacancy at some point for the public to see what the responsibility of a commissioner is. I mean, it's, it's just helpful to, to know.
What I normally do and recommend to city managers, when we get a new planning commissioner and we have an orientation meeting, and we give them the book, we give them the, the general plan, the zoning, we'll go through, you know, what those documents are, what's important. We find out a little bit about the planning commissioner, make sure there's a, there's a good dialogue between staff. They feel comfortable about asking just if they've read something in the staff report that troubles them. Because that's really helpful for us, because sometimes we'll make a recommendation and maybe not understand the full impact. And then when we hear from, back from a commissioner, something we didn't think about, oftentimes what I will do is respond back to the whole commission of a big question, not necessarily your opinion, but that's the question. And this is how you, how you're supposed to address it, or here's the information to answer the question.
And also Grace, that there are, there are certain times where I got invited, kind of presented to reading for a full day of it. I was there, being instructed on, I think, if we, if you, if you do get that, it's a, it's a great thing to attend.
Grace, did you get the, a binder and some stuff?
Well, I got the binder that we
Pretty overwhelmed, yes.
Yes. There's a lot in there.
But it's
But you got it. I just want to make sure, because I got it when I got my
Yeah, Wendy did give that to me.
Yeah, oftentimes, commissioners will get that and they make it, use a boat anchor and they don't even look at it. That's why it's important to have that. I would say have a meeting with Jessica just to go over some of these things so that you understand some of the things that might be confusing in those documents. So, you know, you always look at hierarchically, general plan, the Bible, constitution of the, of the city, the zoning code implements that general plan. And then everything else blows under that. So that's really important to understand. Yes, Miss Lynn.
Just so that way everyone can be on the same page, like the council, the public. Can you just go over for a minute, after you were just up, how you make the determination whether something should be done for council or planning division? And also in terms of the public, whether something should go to either a body. Because a lot of the time, you know, we'll have someone come up to us, make a recommendation, it really should go in front of the planning committee. Or commissioner will be told something in public, it really should be coming for council. So can you just go over for a brief minute, just sort of go on the same page? Where that kind of delineation was, and I know it's a very
Well, first of all, I want to start with the general, the zoning code. Because the zoning code identifies everything in the process, whether it's a general plan amendment, zoning code amendment that goes to the commission first, then to the council. But it can also go from the council down to the planning commission and back. If there's something that the council wants to see happen, communication layer, develop the orders, like regulation and that. That's kind of the black and white of it. But there's always going to be questions as to what, you know, what, you know, what, what, what the question is and how to answer it. Most of the things, if it's a, a community level thing that it doesn't deal with land use, it usually comes to, to Blake and to the council. So, and then the council can ask the planning commission to review it, research it, send it over to them. Yeah, every, the housing one always goes to the planning commission first.
Adoption of natural health, but matters really.
Well, sure, there's a whole, like, I don't know how many thirty, forty programs. We talked about goals, objectives, policies, standards, programs. So there's a whole list of, and that's really the meat of the housing element. And so you have like eight years to implement the housing on the best you can. For example, the state gives you what's called a regional housing allocation number that you're supposed to show capacity for providing so many housing units over that, those eight years. Well, you're not going to be able to meet that, but you have to provide capacity. So you look at the zoning and you come up with it. So in the, the programs will show, you know, basically implement what we're trying to do, create diversity of housing for our community, increase the number of housing, particularly for workforce people. So there's a lot of programs in there, and staff implements those, and oftentimes asks the planning commission for assistance with that. So we'll do what's called an annual housing report. I think we talked, we did that back in April. And that we, we presented to you, and you'll be getting another one next year. That shows how we're progressing with that. And then the state's always kind of looking over your shoulders and make sure you're doing it right, so. That answers your question.
Yeah.
Sure.
Annual progress was April, May.
Okay.
We were a little bit behind. So each housing, annual progress report is due April first, unless you've chosen to do it on a fiscal year basis, which we don't. So it's April first due to the state, and that's the, oh, it's not OPR anymore. It's the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation.
You're way, way beyond the I O, as you say.
Yeah. Yes. But yeah, so it should probably come back to you guys in like February, March.
Yeah. And so we just put on a housing workshop. Jessica did, it was like a, was like a regional housing workshop. So I worked for the city of Modoc, or the county of Modoc. And so I represented them and Jessica represented the city. And then we had, let's see, we had Siskiyou County. We had, well, they didn't show up today. And the Waireka, that's right. Oh, hey. Yeah. And so we did that one last week, a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago, yeah. And so that was one of those programs in our housing element to try to stir up interest in our community, to bring in housing. And so we checked that off. So we got that. We knew we're going to be doing that annually. And we'll probably, Jessica will probably report back to you. And we'll probably, Jessica will probably report back to you at the next meeting about how that came out. So.
Does every planning commission uh, vote then go to city council?
What's that?
Does every single planning commission outcome, does that automatically go to council?
No, most of the things that the planning commission uh, do are not really considered, well, you know, the attorney can correct me, but legislative action is really the regulations, the general plan, the policies. And there's kind of a prior review. The, the council allocates that level of authority to you unless it's appealed. So things like variances, design review, site plan review, architectural review, subdivisions, to name a few, are generally in your zoning code, um, subject to approval by the planning commission. And that's usually the final decision unless it's appealed to the city council. So then council has the final word. Other actions that involve more legislative, things like laws, regulations, zoning codes, general plan policies, you're in advisor directly to the city council. And so you do most of the work and then you make the recommendations to the city council. Who normally approves them. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll do a quick five minute break, if the mayor would.
I'm going to get now into some more of the weeds on meeting procedures specifically for planning commission.
and whether those are compatible with the city's zoning regulations and design standards. And then finally, I'll get an application submittal. I have thirty days to review that under the Permit Streamlining Act to get back to them, let them know whether that application's complete or not. Once it's, if it's not complete, we kind of start that process over, I ask for more information. I do try to get back to people before that thirty days. I haven't taken that long to do that yet. The next thing that happens is an environmental review process that Gary mentioned, that's CEQA. We, I think the commission hasn't seen any CEQA documents in the last year because we just haven't had any projects that required an initial study or an environmental impact report. We've had a couple that needed exemptions. And so I think the zoning ordinance that you guys just saw was an exemption. One that's coming before you, I'm recommending an exemption on as well next week. So a lot of exemptions, but once in a while you might see something called an initial study. And I'm happy to do a separate CEQA presentation if we have something like that coming up. After that review is complete, then I do a staff analysis looking at the project really carefully to make sure that it is in compliance with all of our zoning code and general plan, it's consistent with the general plan, and I prepare a staff report, bringing that to you. Notice the public hearing, all that good stuff. So that's what happens kind of behind the scenes before you see it. Okay. So this is kind of the general recipe for most meetings. And the city council has a very similar meeting structure, if not identical. The first four items on here are just route items. This just happens over and over in each meeting, called order, roll call, pledge of allegiance, and approval of and changes to the agenda. So I'm not going to talk about those, those are pretty simple. The next three that are shaded are the ones I'll get into some more detail on. So we have approval of consent items, public comment on non-agenda items, and then agendized items in public hearings. And then after all that's over, you might hear some reports from staff, and then you join the meeting. Okay, so some more detail on consent items, what they are. These are items not requiring a public hearing. There's no public comment on them, they're usually considered routine items not requiring discretion, judgment, or deliberation. So they typically include approval of minutes, extensions of time, it's just very kind of very minor things. Minor modifications to approved projects, maybe receiving and filing a report from staff, informational materials, maybe even a report on administrative projects, that type of thing. They're typically all grouped together on the consent calendar. You heard the city council earlier group them together when they made their motion. They had three consent items and they were all grouped together as one motion to adopt. And typically, Planning Commission, you guys don't see a lot of consent items on your schedule, but you might at some point, so those do get grouped together for motion. But you can request to pull any of those items as a commissioner. So if there is something on there that you want to talk about, you are welcome to do that. And you would address the chair and ask that that item be pulled for further discussion before adopting it. Okay, so then the next thing that happens is public comment. So there's usually two, two times where the public can comment in any one of your meetings. The first is, you know, the general public comment period, I know you're familiar with that, we just did that earlier. And then later, if we have a development project or a zoning text amendment or something like that, then there would be public comment on that. This, this is the section where people will come up and talk on items that are not on the agenda. So if somebody does get up and starts talking about an item on the agenda, the chair will just remind them, this item is, is agendized, and please go ahead and take your seat and you can comment on that item at a later time during that part of the public hearing. And that, the reason for that is if it's agendized, everybody needs to be able to hear what those comments are on that agenda item. Okay, so when folks get up to the, to the podium here and they're speaking to you, the second thing that is said here is comments should be directed to the chair. So, so sometimes, and this happens during public hearings as well, you'll get some commenters who want to speak to staff, and they'll turn and look at staff or other folks. And just know that if staff does not respond to that commenter, it's because all comments need to be directed through the chair. And that's just part of parliamentary procedure, including your own comments as commissioners, they should be directed through the chair, okay? And I think that probably happens with city council as well. So staff is not generally going to respond to people who are standing here. If the chair wants a response to that person, then they can ask staff to do so, and then staff will normally like direct their response back to the chair, okay? Let's see, so also during the public comment portion of the meeting, commenters, commissioners should just listen, not engage in substantial discussion on any item. You can briefly respond to questions or ask staff to place the item on a future agenda so all members of the commission can have a chance to comment on it. This one is, that's pretty important. So if somebody does come up and they're talking about something that is of interest to any commissioner, that's fine. There just shouldn't be an extended discussion on that topic because that item has not been agendized and other members of the community don't know that that topic is being discussed. So if we do want to talk about that, then we just need, we need to get a direction from the chair to staff saying, please put this on a future agenda, and then everybody in the community can see that on the agenda, and we can talk about that at a later time. Also, no action can be taken on any items not agendized, which I think we already talked about in a previous presentation. David talked a lot about this already, the public's right to participate. Recording of meetings is allowed by the public, that's the thing. He also talked about sign-in being voluntary, cannot be mandatory or a condition of attendance. It is a good idea to ask, I think, I personally think it's a good idea, especially for the clerk, if we ask people for their name, especially just so that if we do need to respond to them or if staff needs to, especially say if it's a public comment on an actual project and we need to respond or talk about that later, we have that person's name, but they cannot be compelled to actually give their name, as he said. We can impose reasonable limits on time, like David talked about. Other things like repetitious or irrelevant comments. Normally, we don't have to say that, there's not a lot of people that I've seen coming in, you know, for against projects so far. But if you, if you get a big group of people coming in who are opposed to a project or for a project, you can give direction before public comment saying, if you have, keep your, keep any repeated comments to a minimum or make sure that you stay on topic, that kind of thing. Any personal attacks on the character or motives of any person, we can limit that kind of thing as well. So that's a reasonable thing to limit. Let's see, what else? Oh, and if there is a group, a big group of people too, the chair can also request a spokesperson for the group. You can request it, I don't think that can be mandated though. And then David already talked about willful disruption. Okay. So that third shaded item that I had highlighted earlier is the, the public hearing itself. Okay, so let me grab some. In your staff report or your, your agenda packets for tonight, there's a few attachments at the back of this staff report. The first one is a Planning Commission meeting script that I just included so that everyone can have a copy of this. At some point, usually the chair is rotated. Typically, that happens once a year, I don't know if that's been happening or not. Doesn't have to happen, but, but all of you may have a chance at some point to be the chair. So I think if you guys can just hold on to this script, then you'll have an idea of what to do the first time or two out of the gate before you start getting used to it. So that was just an informational item for you. And then the second attachment to the packet is a ten-step format for discussion of an agenda item. It's not exactly identical to what you're seeing up there on the screen. Though up on the screen, I've simplified it a little bit, but essentially every public hearing follows the exact same format. First, chair announces agenda item and invites staff to report, staff does a presentation. At that point, the commission asks staff questions on their report, whether it's from the staff report itself or from the staff's presentation. If it is a private development project, the applicant then is invited to come up and speak. They don't have to, but they can, especially if they want to add something that hasn't been said already. And just a note on that, applicants normally are proponents or advocates of their project. Staff is not generally an advocate or a proponent, but an unbiased, objective opinion, hopefully, that has looked at all of the evidence and, and is giving you a recommendation, but isn't necessarily advocating. So little difference in the role between staff and applicant on that, even if staff is recommending approval. Finally, the public hearing opens at that point. So that's when there's public testimony. Then you have applicant can come up and rebut any public testimony after everybody in the public has had a chance to speak. And finally, it's always a good idea too to give staff a chance to respond to what's been said after those other two items, public testimony and applicant rebuttal. And then the chair can close the public hearing. At that point, really, there shouldn't be any more comments from the public because the commission has already potentially had a chance to hear all of that information. Then the commission deliberates and acts on the item. All right, any questions about any of that so far? I've been kind of trying to speed through. I know that you, we want to get to the, the last part of this too, which is really important. You're, yeah. Hmm. The public hearing is still open at that point, unless it's, go ahead. David, no, I was, my thought on that, and I would love to hear your, David's input as well, is the public hearing is still open, so that's possible, but please.
So my advice, and I'll defer to Jessica because she'll run it, but generally at a public hearing, the public has a right to make comments, but there's no absolute right that they get a response to their comments. So I would defer to the chair at the time of the hearing. So generally at a public hearing, you open the public hearing, you say, does anyone want to speak at the public hearing? Public comes up and make comments. Everything flows together from what you're being taught, right? So the reason everything flows through the chair is you control the meeting. And all, whoever's chair controls the meeting. So you can decide whether you want to have a response. Because if, if they have a really good point and a commissioner says, you know, that's a really good point, I'd like to have an answer. You say, okay, let's put a pin in that, and then we're going to take all the public, public comment now, and then once we get the public comment, we're going to turn to staff and say, can you answer, you know, what speaker one, five, and four said about something? But it's at your discretion. What you don't want, because it leads to chaos, is a speaker to say, to turn around and let's say the developers here and say, well, you said that we would have ice cream on Saturdays, and now I don't see ice cream in this plan. What do you, what, what's that? Are you lying to us? Right, now you've got chaos, you're not in control of the hearing, it's kind of spinning off the rails. So you, the chair will say, I'm going to direct, your questions have to come to me, please turn and speak to me. I, I want to know about ice cream, and you all know that ice cream was never in the, in the plan. So you're just gonna say, okay, thank you for your comment, we're moving on, right? Well, you haven't answered my, your, your time is up, thank you for speaking, right? So I would really strongly discourage a give and take during the public hearing. Now, it's your discretion. The, the distinction is the applicant, you usually give more deference, right? Because, and what I usually recommend is you hear the public comment and then they'll say, you know, some valid questions were raised. Let's say Commissioner Sanchez says, you know, there, I, I want to hear the answer to some questions raised by the public. Okay, because remember, you're the deciders, not the public. You, you get to hear their comments, but you say, applicant come up, can you address what Mr. Lim said about the ice cream? We, we'd like to hear your answer. But you see, you're not letting them direct the questions, you're taking their input and giving it back to the applicant saying, can you, can you expand it, or you give it to staff? Does that make sense?
The things that, that happens a lot too is, is that we get so informal that the public hearings closed, we start discussing it up here, and then all of a sudden, one of the commissioners will just pick somebody out of the crowd and start asking them questions, we're closed public comment, so that's not appropriate.
I, yeah, again, I don't recommend that. So again, everything is structured, as Jessica and Gary have been talking about. You want structure because that means, and, and it's not just because we're like, oh, we have to have structure. It's because you're then protecting the due process rights of the applicant, and you're, you're exhibiting good governance. So in that case, let's say, you, you heard the public comment and then a commissioner says, you know, I have a follow-up question for that public comment. At your discretion, you can say, you know, what's your, what's your question? And then what I like to, what I recommend is the, the commissioner says, well, this is my question, I had a follow-up. The applicant is the one who has, you know, skin in the game. So I would take that question and say, applicant, can you answer that question, right? Really, you don't, this sounds, it's not disrespectful, but you know, the member of the public had their time for comment. And unless they have some particular knowledge, then you don't really need to hear from them again, and your, and your staff will have that knowledge. So for example, if they're like, well, they raised a really good question about, you know, the, the length of the beam. Can they elaborate on the length of the beam? Well, Jessica probably knows about the length of the beam, the applicant probably knows, you know, someone else on staff knows, so that's how you redirect it. It's a very, I'm trying to actually think of a situation where you want to go back to a member of the public and ask them to expound some more.
The only time, a, and that's happened a couple of times where it was beneficial because there was a member of the public that we knew was an expert in that particular thing, and they knew more than any of us put together, so.
So in that case, what I would do as the chair, for all of you who will be chairs, you get a commissioner who says, I'd like to ask that person a question because they appear to be an engineer. Okay, as a chair, I'm going to open, reopen public, public hearing for the limited role of asking that person a question, so if you want to come back up. Commissioner, do you want to ask your questions? But as the chair, you, you should retain your authority, and I keep talking, looking at Commissioner K, but whoever's going to be the chair, you retain, you know, you, you, you kind of have to, you know, keep steering the boat. So at some point, like if they start arguing, you have to say, okay, bang, bang, bang. Thank you, and not make anyone feel bad and not yell at anyone, but just say, okay, I think we have what we need. Thank you, I'm going to close public comment, you want to sit back down? Commissioner, I think you have what you need, I'm, I'm still going, no, we're going to move on. And you can have a quiet conversation later, but you know, the goal is to kind of move.
Right.
Right, want to move the boat, so, I hope that helps, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jessica.
That did, that helped immensely.
And there's one, there's one thing I just want to jump in here too with on this, because I think it's really important, and then we'll head on over to the planning staff, is that you have to be really careful too when you're going back to a member of the public, for the same reason that we mentioned earlier, is that you're giving that person now additional time that the other people don't have. And so, you know, in city council, what we've done every once in a while, I think we maybe done this, I know we did it once, maybe twice, and we've done it in finance committee once or twice, where we discuss, we realize that points have gotten brought up that we feel like the public should have more, you know, have another chance to talk on, and we just open up an entirely new second round of public comment, and then give everyone the opportunity to come up, do the public comment again at the same amount, you know, give them the same amount of time, so that way you don't run into that situation where, you know, they think, you know, the applicant thinks that you're giving person X additional time because they oppose the project. So that's just something to be.
I think, I think that's what I gathered from what you said, is open the public comment up again and allow it to happen and then close it again, yeah.
Yeah, so with that, back to the planning staff, and I know you.
My experience is always chair of a meeting, all commissioners of the meeting must respect that, and running their questions through the chair, through the public, these two second. So when you start, when you start the meeting, it's important to have that command so everybody has, oh, this is the guy that's running, this is the woman that's running the meeting, and, you know, and things go a lot smoother that way.
Okay, that is the first bullet up here. So some of the mistakes made during public comment is commissioners and staff responding directly to commentators instead of to the chair, through the chair. So again, I already mentioned that before, but that's really important. Engaging in debate or arguing with the public, that's a mistake. Interrupting commenters, unless obviously they're violating rules. Show, showing any visible bias, like nodding or shaking her head, being, acting emotional. Obviously, I've never seen any of you do that, but just want to mention that too. Of failing to enforce time limits, that's just not that fair to, to others or respectful of their time that they've been given to or decorum rules. Or not clearly distinguishing between public comment and commissioner deliberations. Which we, we just talked about at length. Okay, let's see here. So David went through a lot of this already. I think it may be Gary too, ex parte communications. And just if you hear that term, what that means is it's a one-sided conversation between a commissioner and an interested party outside of, outside of a public hearing. Um, and it can violate due process because it denies others an opportunity to hear that information and respond to it. It can undermine fairness because all participants should have the same information at the same time. And again, everybody's been talking about this, it creates an appearance of impropriety, even if nothing happened. So it can damage public trust. So sometimes though, we kind of, we are, end up in situations where these types of communications do happen. So if they do, you're at a party and somebody wants to talk to you about a project that's coming up that you're going to be voting on. And they want to tell you their feelings about it. You can say something like, well, as a commissioner, I can't discuss the merits of the project outside of the public hearing. You should submit your comments though during public hearing. You should come to this meeting and give us your comments or provide some written comments to staff. So you can invite them to do that. And then if you do have any ex parte communications that need to be disclosed, then those, that should be done at the beginning of the hearing when it's the commission's turn to deliberate. So often I've heard commissioners say, um, I did, the developer did call me. I just want to say that I had this communication with the developer. And he or she, you know, wanted to tell me something about the project. We did not discuss the merits of the project. It was just a clarification on the facts of the project or something like that. So you can disclose that. David, do you have any other thoughts on any of that, on ex parte communication?
Um, no, I think you covered it pretty well. I mean, it's the hardest thing to do because public servants, you, you got into this to help your community. So the natural reaction that you're going to want is to respond to people's questions. So it is one of the hardest things. I just want to acknowledge that, that it's not a natural thing to tell people, oh, you have to wait until the public hearing. But it is the right thing to do, but it, I, you know, just know it is hard. Yeah, and both before and after, actually, you know, you raise a good point, Commissioner, that actually telling people what you're legally obligated to do can have a long-term benefit for you. Because if people know, like the first time, if you have a big controversial project, especially as you say, in a town the size of Dunsmere, where you're all running into each other at the market, at the library, wherever. If they know that you're going to abide by the law and give each applicant their due process rights. And you say, you know what, I cannot talk about this until the hearing. Then everyone's going to be like, okay, she doesn't talk about it. So after a while, they know, okay, I'm not even going to talk to them because they're not, yeah, well, that, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that I, I can't help you as much with, but I'll tell you.
Yep.
Aside from other actual legal ramifications.
Yeah, let's get back to the, let's get back to the.
Yeah.
Presentation.
And there you go. Okay. So some, here's some examples of some legally risky statements that a commissioner might make. I've already made up my mind on this project. That's probably the worst one to say. I spoke with several neighbors and they said that they oppose it. We can approve this even if it violates the zoning code. The applicant seems untrustworthy. You'd never want to make any judgments about the character of the applicant. I promised the neighborhood I'd vote no. Or just making any comments that really aren't supported by the findings or the record. So let's see, more commissioner responsibilities during deliberations. Um, and Gary went over some of these already. I won't deliver these too much, but just make sure you do ask any questions that you have. If it's unclear to you, there's a good chance it's unclear to other commissioners too. So please do that. Um, and I, I really want to support what Gary said earlier about asking me, your staff before a meeting, if you have any clarifying questions or if you think I missed something, because that really does help. We can maybe get that project approved instead of having it continued later. As I, I make mistakes too. We want to make sure we base all our decisions on evidence and the record, avoid conflicts of interest and bias. So disclose and potentially recuse yourself from situations where you might have a financial interest or it affects real property that you own, maybe benefits a family member or friend. Um, or there have been any gifts involved. All right, we already went through this, skip that slide. Okay, so I'm going to get into the kind of the meat of making motions and voting. Okay, so um, the third attachment to your staff packet is a handout on motions. And I'm actually going to have you use this here in a moment. So you can take that out, planning commissioners. So what is a motion is a formal proposal made by commissioners in a public meeting to suggest specific actions or decisions and they require a second. So there's a certain process for making a motion. And that's outlined up here and in your packet here. So usually the chair starts by requesting that motion. This is after all the deliberations and everything are done. One commissioner then states that motion clearly, we'll practice this here in a second, okay? Then another commissioner seconds that motion. The chair then restates the motion clearly, and it is very helpful to staff later for minutes, for the meeting minutes, if the chair reiterates who's, who made the motion and who seconded the motion. Because sometimes I think, you know, staff's trying to kind of write everything down because that needs to go into the minute. So if you can reiterate, um, Chair, or sorry, Commissioner Scalco made a motion to X. And Commissioner Bonnie Bailey seconded the motion.
And then real quick on that, it is up for, for the clerk. So for Wendy, she needs to be able to potentially say, this is what I heard as well. So let me also, Wendy can also have the ability to state what she knows the motion to be.
So we're pretty good on that. We're not, we're not rereading, I'm not rereading the motion that the first person made the motion. I'm not rereading the actual motion. I'm just reading who made the motion, who seconded.
Yes, that's fine. And you could kind of summarize what it was. Made a motion to approve the project, made a motion to exempt the project from CEQA, something like that. Um, and then, then there can be some deliberation, especially if there's any question. I think you guys were really good at this at the last planning commission meeting. To like deliberate when there didn't seem to always be a consensus. But if there is a clear consensus, which, you know, happens, say if you're passing the consent agenda or something like that, you can just call for, um, you can just call for a, a vote just by I, I R N A. Okay. You can say, all in favor, I, or if there's not a consensus, you can do a roll call vote. Okay. All right. Yes.
It says Chair question. If a chair wanted to make a motion, does he need to pass that baton on to somebody else prior to make the motion then?
So.
Many organizations do that. I'm just curious.
The chair can actually make the motion himself if he wants to do that. Or he can call for the motion to be made by one of you.
All right.
Yep. So usually for development projects, there's going to be, or any projects really, even for the zoning text amendment we just did. There's usually two motions that need to be made at the very least. The first is an environmental determination that has findings attached to it. That's for CEQA. And then the second is the project approval. We always have to do CEQA first because it has to clear CEQA before anything else can happen. And obviously if it doesn't clear CEQA, if you say that, yeah, we do not agree to certify this E I R or something like that, then you can't approve that project either. So we have to declare CEQA first, then we do the project approval. And sometimes if it's a complicated project and there's multiple types of projects associated, like there's a subdivision and a, a tech, like a, a zoning map change to the project. And maybe there's a use permit also, then we're going to have three findings for the project determination. Or three separate motions rather, not findings. Yeah.
That the motion can be amended to change like some conditions or findings. And then the person that, the commissioner that makes the motion can amend that motion to include changes.
Yes, and all of that, a lot of that is outlined in this handout that I gave you too. There's all different types of motions. There's a basic motion. You'll see there under the box on the agenda packet, three main types of motions. The basic motion, an amendment to the motion, and you can substitute motions as well. So, um, yeah, this might be handy for you to take along to commission meetings or put in your binder. Okay, um, we are going to, oh, God.
Good question.
Yeah.
I, I've been in meetings where we had a motion and then someone else made a second motion. And then there was, we didn't know what to do with the first motion. Like there's a protocol to, what to handle first and second. How is that handled?
You're saying that somebody made a completely separate motion?
Yeah, they said, well, I make a motion to, and they're, they're revising it or whatnot. That first motion is still hanging out there.
Hmm, um, yeah, I think what needs to happen is that the first motion is made. If nobody seconds that motion, yeah.
All right, well, now let's continue here a second, but I think David wants to.
You want to?
China to.
There is, under, under Robert's rules of orders, there is a process. I'm so sorry.
Oh, actually, David, one thing.
We follow Rosenberg's.
But yeah, I'm sorry, Rosenberg's rules of orders. Yeah, so the general rule is so if there is a motion and nobody seconds it, it dies.
Yep.
Okay, so I say, I move, I move for, I don't know why, I think I'm thinking about ice cream. I move that we eat ice cream on Saturdays. And nobody seconds it, then there's no motion to vote on. You need a second, but I think you're talking about, I make a motion for ice cream on Saturdays. Ms. McGee, I second. And then she says, I make a motion for ice cream on Saturdays. And somebody second, Gary second. So now we have two competing motions. The rule is you take the last motion first. So you basically go in reverse order. So you get the second one, that goes first. If that passes and the first motion dies.
Oh, it dies?
It's dead, because the, the second motion takes precedent. If the, if the second motion fails, then you go back to the first motion.
What if the first motion wasn't seconded?
One second, um, I'm going to pass this over.
Okay.
Off the rules of order is the tiering system where you have to go back up the tiering system.
Let me go look.
Rosenberg's is you go in the order in which the motions were made.
Let me, let me double check it.
Yeah.
She's very good at procedure. She's probably better.
I know, I've, I've heard her before.
This is why Rosenberg's is way more efficient than Robert's. It's because Robert's you have to go bottom up. And so you have to track every single motion that tiered out of the motion. And you have to take it from that way up. But I think Rosenberg's, if I remember, is the opposite, where you take the first motion made in time. Which is way easier, then you don't have to.
So in that, and so in that case, the first, if the first motion passes, does it kill the second motion?
Which, most of the time.
Oh, great.
Depending on the wording of the motions. But I'd say generally, yes, it would.
And I, I feel like the situation you're describing, somebody made a motion and then another person made another motion. So there was never a second on the first.
Yeah, there's not a second in that.
Yeah, so if there's not a second on the first motion, then I don't actually know what happens with that.
I think, is it, is it bottom?
If there's no second, the motion just dies.
There's no.
Oh.
Like there's no pause between the first and the second.
So you always want to do, make a pause to see if there is a second.
So he's, he's found the answer. All right, um, David, if you want to go, and then David, I'll let you answer this one and then we'll, we'll move on to the next stuff.
So I'm looking at the Cal Cities Rosenberg Rules of Orders summary, which, you know, we can, we should send this to everybody. It's really, it's only 10 pages. When there are two or three motions, so Rosenberg says there can be up to three motions on the floor at the same time. The chair can reject a fourth motion until the chair has dealt with the three that are on the floor. When there are two or three motions on the floor at the same time, the vote should proceed first on the last motion that is made. For example, assume the first motion is a basic motion to have a five-member committee. During the discussion of this motion, a member might make a second motion to amend the motion. Uh, and then perhaps during that discussion, a member makes yet a third motion as a substitute motion that we should have something else. The proper procedure would be as follows. First, the chair would deal with the third, the last motion on the floor, the substitute motion. If the substitute motion fails, the chair would then deal with the second, now the last motion on the floor, the motion to amend. If that one fails, then they go back to the first motion. So just reverse order.
Okay. Well, absolutely not. Thank God. Yeah, but there's more of you, so it's more likely. All right, Jessica, back to you.
There was a lot of that, I think, at the last meeting, so this is good. Okay, um, I did want to touch, touch real quick on findings. Because findings are so important for planning commission. They are the justification for why you're making your decision. Okay, there, you've got the evidence that was presented to you on the one hand, and then the decision on the other hand, and the findings are the thing that bridges the gap between those two things. So I'm sorry, this writing is so small on my screen. It actually showed up a little bit bigger. Hopefully you guys could actually see this, but I want you to look at the attachment, the, um, in your packet on motions. And um, do you want to point out, before we start practicing the actual motion, there are two findings on this motion, A and B. And so this is, these are really good examples of findings that were made in order to adopt a CEQA document for this project. One was, there is no substantial evidence in the record supporting a fair argument that the proposed project as mitigated and conditioned might have any significant adverse impact on the environment. So you have a full justification for how you got from the facts that were in that environmental document to the decision to adopt that environmental document. It's because the document showed that there weren't any significant adverse impacts. So that's an example of a finding. And these are very, very important, especially if a project is appealed to city council or is litigated later on. And extremely important if you're ever denying a project also, that you have valid justification for it in your findings. Okay, so let's see here. I'm going to have, who do I want? Um, Commissioner Sanchez, Michael Sanchez, I'd like you to be the chair. Okay, so you're going to call for a motion, but don't do it just yet. And then Commissioner Grace Sanchez, I'd like you to make the motion. And Commissioner, uh, White Bailey, can you please second the motion? And then you're going to kind of wrap it all up.
So how do you, how do you call them?
Okay, so you're going to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so you will basically just say, do, can I, do I hear a motion on this project? Okay.
Okay, yeah, do I hear a motion on this project?
Okay.
I am making a motion.
I make a motion and then, so what you're going to do is I make a motion that, and you're going to start with this. It'll always be in your staff report and it's going to look something like what's on the screen. After reviewing and considering the project, recommend the city council adopt. Da, 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 da. And I'm sorry, it's up on the screen, this part of it is, so it's.
A or B, where, where are we at?
Number one, environmental action.
One, okay, I make a motion after review and consideration, recommend the city council adopt the proposed mitigated, uh, the whole, you would.
So here, you're going to just read the whole thing up. So here, you're gonna just read the whole thing up until you get to findings A and B. So you, so let me, let me do this one for you real quick.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so I make a motion after reviewing and considering the project. We recommend the city council adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program pursuant to blah, blah, blah. You're actually gonna say those words, though. And make findings A and B as outlined in the staff report. You do not have to say all of the findings, okay? So when you guys are making motions, no need to say that. If there's a lot of findings, sometimes there's a lot of them, you can say making findings A through L, something like that, okay? And then.
Call for a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, is there a second on the motion? Okay, secure a second, discussion deliberation is open for discussion.
Let's pretend everybody, you think everyone's gonna agree, so.
Okay, so there would be open discussion?
You basically, at this point, will then say, um, you will say, so Commissioner, you'll say Commissioner Grace Sanchez made a motion to approve the environmental document, yeah. And Commissioner Bailey seconded.
Okay, yeah, for minutes sake, so yeah, Commissioner Grace Sanchez made a move. Uh, made a motion that we approve the environmental action after reviewing consideration recommended by the city council to adopt the proposed mitigated negative declaration. Reporting program. And that motion was seconded by Commissioner Dwight Bailey. Uh, and then we go to a vote?
Yes, and you can call for a vote at that point. You can say all in favor, or you can just take a role clerk, please take a roll call vote. You can say something like that. So that's basically how it is, and when you are reiterating, you don't have to reread the whole motion again. So you can just summarize again, okay? So good job. Okay, I know it's a little painful to make these motions, but I just was in a different planning commission meeting where it was really a struggle for the commissioners to do it. So I thought it might be worth a little bit of practice. Do you guys want to practice another one, or you wanna skip it?
They actually have.
You feel good about it? Okay, good. Super, okay, so, and this one is just a project action, so we just adopted the environmental document. Now we had a couple of project actions. There's more examples of findings. And I would be happy to send all of you this presentation too, so you can kind of take a look at this stuff more clearly later. So, final words on this, chair responsibilities and best practices, maintain order and ensure fair participation in meetings. Um, clearly open and close public hearings, important to use those words. Manage time limits and ensure consistent enforcement. Ask clarifying questions, ensure motions are stated clearly before voting. Redirect off topic or inappropriate comments respectfully and model neutrality and professionalism at all times. Um, so there's a couple scenarios here. I just threw these in here. This is the last slide. Essentially, we don't have to do this right now. I know it's getting late. Um, but if, if you guys have questions right now or wanted to go run through any of these, I'm happy to do that. Yeah. That if both of them can't be here?
Yeah, some.
Then I, I think that what we do in that instance is just elect a person to run the meeting. Yeah, and, and you would, I guess you guys have seven on the commission, so there's quite a few people to choose from. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, yeah, four is a quorum.
Four, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Any other questions, or does anybody want to, like, have any questions about what you would do in any of these situations? Like redirecting testimony or dealing with someone who's argumentative and the public commissioners disagree.
Sumeria four.
Applicant introduces new evidence after the hearing is closed. So, and I'm gonna turn to David again on that, because we only discussed earlier when the hearing was still open. I think you can reopen it, but.
So that's at the discretion of the chair. You could take the evidence in at your discretion. You would just reopen for the limited purposes of letting in additional evidence, but you could also deny it. You could say, you know, hearing is closed, we're not taking any more evidence, we're now deliberating and discussing.
Questions? Yeah.
It's better for Dave to answer, but, um, when the commission, pretty much everything the commission does is subject to appeal to the city council, so I always, um, offer at the end of, um, a decision that the actions appeal to the city council within, I don't know how many, is it 10 days? 15 days, whatever the ordinance says to the city council.
Oh, yes. Did you get that? Okay. Yeah. Either way, it's appealable by any member of the public or the applicant. Even in some cases, the agency can do things with it. So there's some resources outlined here. These are also in your staff report packet, but the Institute for Local Government has a bunch of really great resources, including a planning, planning commissioner handbook. So check that out if you have more questions. Okay, so I'm done. I think.
Thank you. So. And then before we run into Blake, I just want to, um, just set a few ground rules for this next discussion. If you don't mind, um, number one is that we're not making any decisions tonight beyond that this needs to be discussed more by either one of our two bodies. So no action can be taken on any of these items except for, hey, we need to talk about this more at a meeting when it's properly agendized. Um, number two is, there are 13 of us up here. So, uh, normally I am pretty loose with the whole through the chair thing. Uh, Blake is facilitating this meeting, and I think he's gonna be standing over there, and he can see everyone a little bit better. So instead of through the chair, just raise your hand, go to Blake, and try to keep everything fairly short to the point. Like I said, we're gonna be, any questions or comments, try to keep it fairly short along with the discussion since it is fairly late. And we will, if need be, be discussing any of these in a lot greater detail, uh, when they come before us. So with that, I'll hand it off to you, Blake.
Excellent, so I'm gonna keep sitting, but good. Just want to stretch a little bit or anything like that, do that right now. Um, great, you guys are done. So we're gonna just keep moving on then. Uh, so starting off, I'm just gonna run through these down the line, okay? Again, Michael said it perfectly, no action item right now. This is a time for staff to glean from the bodies. As we've heard before from the different presenters, more, more statement, more vision, more, uh, generic ideas, okay? So we're not getting in any weeds, all right? There has been kind of discussion between the planning commission that we have noticed a staff that has said, oh, planning commission would like this, okay? Council may like this, uh, citizens may like this. How do we, in essence, bring some of these things? So some of these items are items that we have heard that are of some import. Yep, so, starting off with like downtown revitalization efforts. If you have something that you want to say at this point, say it, you know, potentially very quickly.
Take as much time as you need, but try to be concise.
Uh, one that we've heard consistently at the planning commission are is, um, sort of reorganizing the central location at the cornerstone, uh, where the fountain is uh, into more of a central city hub.
Good, excellent points, yep. Great, moving along, so short, uh, question, great. That was not, the specific plaza was not in the reviser's plan. That was a No, not that I recall. It was mainly about the business aspect, so. Great, yeah, and as you're, so I'm hearing things that like people are maybe bringing to you that maybe you as a citizen may want to say, hey, but as a planning commissioner, right, as we heard, your duty is to input from a finding, from a staff report.
Yeah, I think the
So I think as.
Point of the item was to discuss the priorities for the city moving forward, since we don't get to have this dialogue with you directly because of the Brown Act stuff, and so, like, again, the Pine Street Plaza thing, there was no feasibility study. It was just conceptual in term, and it wasn't even like a drawing conceptual, it was just people voiced that idea and have support for it. It has not gone further than that in terms of like the actual work we've done. But in terms of the item at hand, we would love to hear if you do want that, if you want more invested in that. I think that's what this item is, is this is more of like a blue sky meeting, where it's like, what are the big ticket items? Because eventually, and this is just my personal thing, it's not necessarily councils as a whole. I'm just here to listen to you all tonight, because at the end of the day, we actually get to make the decision on what the priorities are. So I think this is a good time for whatever has come up in your own personal observations, items that people bring to the planning commission. You know, again, your role is advisory, so whatever you would like to bring up as, you know, an item of importance or something that you want to go like, hey, this is low priority, but I just want to make sure it's on a list somewhere. Like, so it's kind of a free flow up to you guys how you want to do that.
Yeah.
Wonderful. So great, on that notes, right, we are kind of in this time where planners, commissioners, you guys are all free to email me, communicate with me, say, hey, let's, then it's up to me to kind of gauge and say, okay, the planning commission is thinking this is important, so then we'll bring it up, and then there will be public noticed. People will be able to comment. Planning commissioners can then take in the information decide as a body to recommend to council, right? So good, so. Right, we should treat things where as a commission, if you do want something to be on the agenda, just like city council members, if they want something on the agenda, they'll motion and get a second. All it needs is a motion and a second to get it placed onto the agenda. Right, that's the formal.
Future agenda.
Future agenda.
Future agenda, yeah.
Every, yeah, unless it's emergency, but that's never the case, as we likely heard from David, right? So it's, it's more, because the, right, the entire idea, again, due process and having the public to be able to weigh in. Right, so you don't want to get any opinions yet, you don't, you're just gonna tell me this is something that's been on my mind, on, on citizens' minds. Um, then I can take and roll with that based off of staff time, staff availability. So great, so I'm hearing mainly downtown revitalization stems more around city assets. Specifically plaza, things like that. Yep, great, we are gonna move on then. So, I'm trying to go quickly.
I have one I want to just maybe give everyone a yes or no nod on this one, just ask. I was really happy with the work that you guys did on the paint ordinance. One thing I wouldn't mind seeing is a few more of these ordinances revisited to try to find ways to streamline them a little bit more. Would you, would the planning commission be okay with signing to have council send down some of these things we have on the books already for you to take a look at and figure out ways that they could be streamlined, just like we did with the, um, painting ordinance. Signage, whatever, yeah. Okay.
Through the chair?
Yeah.
Uh, maybe I don't quite understand this item as presented. I think there's a lot of different good things that could be done here, given the late hour. I think there's a lot for us as a group who cares deeply about Dunsmere and our public servants to discuss and prioritize, and there's probably even more. Um, my thought when we made the motion to make this meeting at council was kind of twofold, want to do training that's necessary. Um, both for specific commission, council, general brown act training, et cetera. But the second one was, we don't interact with you guys ever. We don't all show up at your meetings, you don't show up at ours. But there's a communication that that should take place, especially regarding some of our big picture, you know, where we'd like to go. So I, I, if this is a longer, broader visioning exercise, which I'm happy to make it that, I propose we do it at a different meeting in the future. But I think to quickly touch base and hear from you guys, maybe individually, because you don't have time to consider as a commission uh, yet, you know, what your priorities would be if we were to give you a list to choose from and rank them, so to speak. Uh, so if you guys have any thoughts on these topics, please give them to us, but feel free to say we should do another meeting in four months and focus on the visioning aspect without the training taking up three hours at the time.
In all different spots in Dunsmere, including downtown revitalization. And there's a lot of activity happening right now that you guys may not be aware of. Um, recent meeting with the chamber with the mayor, where, um, city manager with Matthew, with Mark Rowley, owner of Mossbury Hotel, myself. Uh, to strategize immediate actions we can take on the streets with businesses. And so with that in mind, I'll look over at David and say, how do I, as a citizen, uh, make sure that these guys know what we're doing without violating the Brown Act?
So in that case, you're not a member of these bodies, so you're just as a regular citizen, you can email them. You can, uh, yeah, because the Brown Act only works one way. So, you know, as a member of the community, you don't give up any rights to communicate with your elected and planning, elected representatives and, you know, commissioners. It's incumbent upon them to make sure they don't make any decision or discuss amongst themselves uh, any item that might come before them, but you as a citizen can, you know, remember, there was a slide that said unilateral. It only goes one way, so you are free to just, I'm sure I, they don't want me to tell you, you can bombard their emails if you'd like.
I mean, you won't get a lot of responses, hopefully, if you email all of us.
Please, well, please B C C everyone on that, whenever you're emailing everybody, or if one of you emails the council, please B C C everyone, so that way they can't hit reply all, and we can't see the general conversation. I'm gonna kick this back to Blake, though, to move on to the next.
Though on that, always be weary of if you ever do reply all.
Yeah.
Be weary of anytime you are discussing city business with anybody else in the room. I mean, just, just be weary of discussing city business as a general non-fun person. Okay, so I agree very much with, uh, council member Brian, so mainly my points in, in outlining these right here are so that, one, the public could have come in and said, these things are definitely important, right? Now we have the opportunity to, to say. But, uh, I, I know short-term rentals are important to you guys. I know this, this idea of secondhand stores, the comment of uh, do we need to change certain things, right? I, I get a lot of those things, so I don't think we necessarily need to belabor any of that idea. Well, reorganization of plant, let me just run through these, and then, so reorganization of planning commission, that was simply an idea out there of, are we able to get seven people? We have seven wonderful people right now, so maybe not as important, right? Uh, but that's mainly a city council idea as well. Uh, then we have this whole future study, so we were thinking the first four, this is Jessica, and I kind of think of the first four are maybe something that we might be working on uh, uh, as we can, because we've heard that that is important. Um, but some of the future things, I know public art was one thing that happened last time, right? Other sequel things, I do know cannabis is in there. We are actually in process on some cannabis things. Um, then other planning concerns. So now I'm just gonna stop there and just go at the late hour. Does anybody want to, either one, highlight anything that just came through in that sixth item?
It is kind of hard, uh, to address these at the end of this long meeting, because my mind is like in training and listening to, uh, the attorney and the city planner. Uh, but, uh, about the short-term rental, th- this is something that I hear about that we, we these short-term rentals are taking up houses that could go to citizens for purchase. And we don't have enough housing, and, or we have part-timers here, and there's, the, the houses are empty, and I, you know. And I, you know, I, I really don't know how to address that uh, with.
Great, that'll be on a future agenda.
That's it. How to address that.
Yes.
Discussion about it last time, and there are about ten items that we had requested um, to Jessica, to pull together in a staff report. Um, and I have those listed here. Again, I looked back to the meeting and just wrote them all out, um, cause I didn't yet, but um, I'm happy to say, you know, share those, but and so we did, it'd also be nice to start establishing metrics that we can look at, at some sort of regular um, quarterly report to see trends and things and talk about that.
Just out of curiosity, on the council side, are you um, those ten items, are those related to short-term rentals, or just ten items in general that the planning commission's interested in? Okay, got you.
Got you. Yeah, so we'd like to recommend, we, we'd still like to make a recommendation to you all, you know, again, our, our position is not to uh, approve ordinances, however, we'd like to align our short-term rental um, chapter seventeen. Uh, Minus will code better with the housing element, um, and uh, potentially set a cap in order that short-term rentals, we don't risk short-term rentals oversaturating our already limited housing stock. Um, so that was part of what the rec, the staff report that we requested was. And it is a high priority for some of us, uh, for some of us. Um, and again, you know, as our role in implementing the housing element, I think is aligned with that, even though we can't make ordinances, you know, we can't approve ordinances.
If I could follow up on that, as I remember, the planning commission was supposed to reevaluate short-term every six or months or a year. It has been about three, three and a half years, and we've never seen that on the agenda. We don't write our agendas, and how are we to respond and take care of that if it's not on our agenda? So I think that's a lot of the questions that she proposed, that some of the answers have been discussed three and a half years ago, which are still valid, but they're not current.
Yeah.
Point making. Moving on from that.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's move on, and we'll, yeah, look into that.
Real quick.
May I ask a question about the short-term rentals and some of the other items? Um, I just wanna make sure that, because planning commission did ask me to provide a report basically on short-term rentals, and I think a couple of other items as well, like you mentioned, uh, Commissioner Tomer, and um, I wanna make sure that that's okay for me to do that uh, with city council, just because it, it does take time to do that. There are funds that would be expended on that effort.
This is a great segue into what I was actually gonna discuss with finance committee. Their, their role, right, is a lot of budget finance to get in the weeds of things. So if I mention that in general, but yes. City council is able to direct me, I am able to come to you guys to say uh, and, and then you guys can direct how you need funds, cause the, this is a, an expenditure, right? We are expending money on these, both these consultants, so we do need to uh, make sure that we are with my finance director hat on maintaining the, the budgetary aspects.
I see that one or two of my fellow counselors might have some input on this.
Um, you know, maybe as finance chair, someone who also likes to think about it, uh, it, it's not whether we'd like to see it or not, I just wanna weigh it against all the other things, all the other needs, priorities of the city. This is where a broader discussion of priorities, I think, would be helpful before we spend, and it really depends on the price, if it's very, very affordable, of course. Um, I, I'd love to see it there, but um, if it's extensive research, um, often council makes decisions with public support for something, and we don't know the full ramifications of the cost, only to find out that we directed something that ended up costing ten thousand dollars, and maybe it wasn't quite the time to spend that, you know, for, for example. So we're getting better at putting a dollar amount on it, you know, when we pass something, so I'd just like to see a scope of work for it before we approve, but I'm supportive of looking at it.
I'll just kinda, or you have something more to do? I'll just maybe, Brandon. Um, I'll just kinda summarize then on this. Why don't you give us a estimate of how many hours it's gonna take to compile that? And then as um, Mr. Bailey uh, brought up, uh, the um, if the if the current ordinance governing short-term rentals requires periodic reviews, and we're behind on that review, having those numbers could be um, integrated into that uh, review as well, and that could be a good time to do that. Cause the other thing I don't wanna see is council is, hey, we need a review in four or five months, if we were on a regular schedule, which it sounds like we're not. Um, I don't wanna see the item here, and then more I, more done again. I wanna see both those bundled together just in the name of efficiency, if that is possible, and if that is convenient, so um, that's, I think, probably where it sounds like councils that overall is just we don't have an issue with it, we just wanna see kind of numbers first, and okay off on how many hours it's gonna take. And if we can integrate it into the larger periodic review, that sounds like it needs to happen.
I'll be really quick on this. Um, just a point of clarification, i- it, it's not in the ordinance to do a review. Council asked for the review after six months, um, two year, and I think planning commission did too. It's fine to do a report every year, it's great, metrics are great. Um, don't disagree with any of that. Um, it is nine o'clock. I work. Yeah.
Yeah.
Every, everybody here, we're, um, I really appreciate this item. I'm really sorry that we really overpacked this agenda. Um, I apologize to everybody. Um, I think this is a really useful conversation, and I think what I would like to do is uh, make a motion to continue to a future meeting, cause I, I do want to hear from everybody in terms of the, like, the Pine Street stuff. I wanna hear what you guys are hearing as well, and what you would like to work on. Um, cause going back to the question of the short-term rentals as a, as a higher level thing, when we got the request for the cannabis ordinance update, what we ended up doing, which is um, kind of a finance committee suggestion, is to, instead of going like, yeah, let's go do that. We now go, okay, what is the scope of work, how many hours, and what is that gonna cost? And then that comes back to city council to essentially go, yeah, we can spare, I can't remember how much we're spending on the cannabis ordinances. But we can, we can essentially with the recommendation from the finance committee, take a look at our budgetary items and see what we have available to you, but that being said, I think what we're trying to do with this process is to get better about that, so that we can look at what you wanna do in like the next two years, and then we can just provide you with that budget ahead of time, so that you don't have to keep coming back to ask us every single time. Um, so I think that's part of us doing to become more efficient. Um, and I think one of the things that the finance committee has talked about, and the chair has shared with me, is adding a fiscal impact to some of uh, the decisions that we make moving forward in both planning and zoning. Um, a- again, my big soapbox, and this is the last thing I'll say, because I'm exhausted. My little soapbox is, we are a very tiny town, we have very limited resources. Um, I'm really happy that we have the team that we have, they're super valuable. But one of the things I wanna point out with that is, is we are paying for really, really great advice. But unfortunately, that means we're going to have to take a look at what our priorities are, and, and we're not gonna get to some of it. Um, but it, I think it is very clear that we do wanna revisit short-term rentals. Um, I think we're working on cannabis. I feel like there's another thing that we're working on too, that we approved a scope of work for signs, or I don't know, maybe it was the paint, I don't know, I, it's been a while, and I'm very tired. Um, but I really appreciate everybody here doing this. I think if you could give us maybe a little bit of grace, that this is kind of a new format that we're trying out here, and like kinda trying to be a little bit more communicative and efficient. Um, but yeah, um, I would really like to.
Yeah.
Right. Um, anyone uh, object to that? Or is there a competing motion that we'd vote on before that one?
Essentially, I think staff can follow me with everybody to look at schedules again, to get something in the next couple, like, I, not four months, but in the next month or two.
It's been moved and seconded to have a second follow-up meeting to this one, that just goes straight into kind of the uh, discussion session. Uh, all those in favor of tabling this meeting and continuing this on, or continuing this meeting on to a later date, uh, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Meeting continued.
Thanks, all.
Technically, we still need to, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Alright, seconded. I'll second that. All in favor, aye, meeting adjourned. Okay.